Here.
Mayor Breeden?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Four present, one absent, will probably be late.
He said he would be here by six.
Okay.
He called me. Okay, so the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Um, we need to move, uh, poll item number 10. The SCE agreement is not ready to go.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess some people have asked why. The answer is, uh, the version that we got back from SCE has a scope of work that's not consistent with what we were asking for. So, um, we just got that inconsistent scope of work while I was driving up here. So this is-
Okay.
Late-breaking stuff, so we'll try to do it for the next meeting.
We have a group of people that are coming to address that. Should I text them?
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
Are you gonna also make mention of at the beginning of the meeting?
I will.
I second. I assume your approval is modified now? My second.
Mr. Maurer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, um, items, let's see, public comment on closed session. So the, do you have a comment? No, sir, okay. All right, Councilman, will you lead us in the pledge?
Let me ask, shall we all stand and uncover? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure you remain standing. We want to, uh, give way to have implication, uh, to start our meeting off. And we've been honored to have our very own, Mr. Spear, if you will lead us, sir.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for allowing us to live in a country that's free, where we can conduct business publicly, in the open. We just thank you for this council that we have. We ask that your blessing, we ask that your wisdom would be upon them as they make decisions that concern everyone in the community tonight. We just ask, Father, that you'd, uh, you would, uh, continue to look out for this city. And, and Father, right now, there's a, there's another thing that's really pressing on everyone's minds, and that's our, Hurricane Harvey has already gone through Texas and in Louisiana, and now we have Irma. That's about to hit at least the Gulf Coast and Florida. We'd ask, Father, that you just, um, be with the folks there, protect them, and restore them. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dennis, nice to hear from you again. Really, a real pleasure. Okay, so we have, um, city attorneys report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, the city council met in closed session to discuss two items. Uh, one of them was labor negotiations with UFC Golden State, number eight. Uh, the city council spoke with agency negotiator Ron Strand. Uh, no reportable action was taken. City council also met in, uh, closed session to discuss another tort claim that had been filed by Southern California Edison, uh, in the amount of seventeen hundred dollars. After receiving a report from, uh, the city attorney, uh, the city council unanimously voted, uh, to reject that tort claim with directions to the city clerk to send a notice of rejection as soon as, uh, practical. Uh, Madam Mayor, that, that concludes the report.
Thank you, there is no other items, so then we will go on to presentations. The Employee Service Award. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, so, this is an award in recognition of service. This certificate is awarded to Lance Foster in recognition of five years of service to the city of Ridgecrest. And Lance works over in the Parks and Recreation Department, and he's, um, he helps keep track of the indoor playground, too, so. So, thank you, Lance.
Is Lance here?
No.
Oh, sorry. We'd like to say, all of us say, "Thank you." Okay, the next item on the agenda is, um, council announcements. I have a few I- I'm sorry. My apologies. Public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action here on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. A public comment section of the agenda is limited to one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name as their public comment. Please come forward.
My name is Nell Von Jeglem, and, uh, I am here because I just recently discovered that the splash pad that you guys have been discussing for a while is being considered to be put into Freedom Park. I'm a member of the Exchange Club, and we do the Parade of a Thousand Flags and the Remembrance Field every year. Also, there are a lot of very special, nice things that happen in there, and I'm afraid that a splash pad in that arena would interfere dramatically with, I know it would definitely, I don't know what it would do to the, um, the, the flags, the remembrance field that we have up all, all week. And the other issue that I, that I thought of was that when you've got kids playing, and they're wet, and they're squealing, and they're having a good time, and then they have to use the restroom, and they'll be in and out of Kerr McGee, and the floors will be wet, and there are a lot of meetings and a lot of things that go on in Kerr McGee that that would be an interference to. And I believe that because we have Helmers Park across the street, the Old Penny Pool across the street, the Old Boys and Girls Club across the street, um, that's already there. The infrastructure would be there for the splash pad. There would be restrooms available to the kids that wouldn't interfere with any kind of meetings and things. And I do not want anything that could cause the Parade of a Thousand Flags and the Remembrance Field to go away. It's just too special. It, it honors, you know, our military, and remembers what happened, and we don't want to ever forget that, and keep our guard up. And it's such a peaceful, quiet, honorable, wonderful way, park, the way it is now, that, um, people have weddings there. I mean, it's just, I just would really like you to consider not putting it in Freedom Park for the overall benefit of the community. I have spoken to probably fifty people about this. I mean, I just couldn't believe that that was what was happening, and I, no one, everyone has said the same thing. It belongs across the street where the infrastructure already is, so I would like to ask you to please consider that seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jeglem.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, city council members. My name is Jeremy Hutman, and I'm with the California First Property-Assess Clean Energy, or PACE Financing Program. Uh, I know that, uh, the, uh, PACE Financing has come up a lot in, uh, in public discussion recently, and so I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself, uh, my program, and also our sponsoring agency. So the, the name of the program is California First, and we're sponsored by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, uh, or CSCDA. CSCDA is the largest joint powers authority in the state of California, and we are, uh, co-sponsored by the League of California Cities and the State Association of Counties. There are about five hundred and two member agencies, or five hundred-plus member agencies, cities and counties for, uh, for CSCDA, including the, uh, the city of Ridgecrest. We have a long history with this city. Um, in fact, we provided seventy-two million dollars in financing in two thousand and seven for Ridgecrest Regional Hospital. Um, we have a deep commitment to the community, and we feel that, uh, we're very happy to be able to offer the, uh, the California First Program to, uh, to the community. Now, uh, for, for PACE, it's, uh, been very successful in, in the city of Ridgecrest. About a hundred and thirty property owners have used PACE to finance measures that help, uh, reduce energy and water bills. These are for measures like solar, or energy efficiency, like, uh, um, efficient air conditioners or, or water heaters. Now, so, so PACE is really working for the community, but, but the main reason that I'm here today is, uh, is to talk about a development in consumer protections, uh, for, for PACE Financing in the state that I hope you'll consider. I know that, uh, you'll be making a decision in the near future on what to do with PACE i- in the community. And there's a bill that's, uh, that's going to be passed very soon. It's, uh, AB 1284. And what this bill is gonna do i- is put PACE under the same oversight that the mortgage industry and credit card companies are under, under, uh, Department of Business oversight. So it's gonna have, the, uh, the industry's gonna have a, a full regulator, and all the PACE companies are gonna need to, uh, be, have, um, have licenses to, uh, to work in the state. So this will provide another layer of protection. This, this should actually be passing this month, sometime in September, possibly early October. And, uh, and so what I'd request that the, uh, the city council do is, instead of making a decision now, before this legislation has gone through, and you can see what PACE will actually look like with, uh, with this additional layer of consumer protection and additional cover for the city, I would ask you that you, uh, you hold off on voting or making any type of decision until the, uh, the California legislature actually makes a decision. It should be happening very soon, um, and then, then we'd be very interested in having a, a discussion here about how to, um, about what PACE can do for the community and the future of PACE in, uh, in the city of Ridgecrest. And then also, just to, to put in perspective, uh, recently, and I'm sure you all have heard this, Kern County and the, um, uh, city of Bakersfield recently decided to, to put their PACE programs on hold pending all of this legislation and see what would happen in the future. That's certainly, um, something that happened locally, but it's really not the trend in the state. Actually, in two thousand and seventeen, forty-one cities and counties have decided either to join PACE or to expand their PACE programs because of how well it's working in the community. And since the city of Bakersfield and Kern decided to put their program on hold, seventeen cities and counties around the state have decided to expand their program or continue it. So, um, so we're, we're very excited about PACE and the way it's working in the community. I wanted to introduce myself and, and let you know that I'm a resource. If you have any questions or hear anything that's out there, um, I'm happy to provide information to the council. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Council, Mike Neal. I want to bring before this council and request an action from the council on something that has now been, uh, I've been trying to get changed in Ridgecrest for about three years now. Mayor Breeden, I believe you recall the time you agreed to go down and ride in a wheelchair by the bulbouts, uh, by Alboard Street. And I have since, uh, actually, previous to that, I actually video-recorded, after which time my recorder quit working, uh, the way people turn in those two intersections, which as you're all, um, should be aware of, at Alboard, and at Sanders Street, where they got the middle medians placed in there, restricting the lane width. And bicyclers are not really very safe, having to go around those bulbouts there. And I've addressed this at committee meetings with no response, with the former city manager, with no results, and, uh, I hope to bring to you probably next meeting, a scaled drawing indicating how it can, can occur that a driver making left turns from, you know, coming from the north, uh, onto Ridgecrest Boulevard can neglect to see a bicycle rider who, at a certain point in time, you know, might, unfortunately, the timing might all be just right. He might be right there, and he not see the car, and the driver swing out into the small available space for a bicycle rider to exist in, and then nail one of them, at which time it's more than likely it will have a death on the part of the bicycle rider, which none of us want. So I'm requesting this go on to the full council for a discussion, seeing as how the other discussions I've had over the last three years come to no effect, if you would. As far as, uh, what was just said about the splash pad, uh, I like Ms. Jeglem, I respect her, but I, I fail to see that there's a big problem with splash pad, where it's currently being planned to be, uh, as far as interfering with, you know, the, this flag display. Uh, I, I'm totally puzzled. I don't see how that is even gonna happen. And I think it's pretty obvious to everyone here, uh, any operation of the splash pad during that time probably would be shut down, uh, as to not distract from that display, and so it just doesn't seem to be a real big problem. The voice of fifty people means something, but there's a lot more people in Ridgecrest that heard about all the discussions that went on. This was fully vetted at council meeting, so I would have thought that we'd have got all those bugs ironed out, and it's down the road, so I think we can live with it as we got it. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will close. Could you come up here and speak so we can all hear you, please?
If it's an item that's on the agenda, you have to comment during that item.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I think, I think you asked me, and I forgot to let the public know, that the item on the agenda tonight about the SCE poll relocation was taken off the agenda-
The agenda.
Because the contracts were not ready for approval yet.
That's item number ten.
So if you're here for item number ten, they're not going to consider it this evening.
Okay. All right, please.
Hello, my name is Dawn Sanders of Ridgecrest. I've been a Ridgecrest Indian Wells Valley resident for over forty-nine years. I would like to state that California voters passed the Compassionate Use Act of nineteen ninety-six. Since that time, California voters have upheld the right for patients to have use for cannabis. We patients have waited for California lawmakers-
Ma'am, that's an item that's on the agenda.
I didn't see it on the paperwork from the back wall here.
It's item nine.
Nine, okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to address us on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Pardon me? Is there any of you that would like to address us on an item that is not on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, is it possible that maybe you could get a pair of those headset that would maybe help him?
We have-
Do we have any more? There's a, we have a hearing, we have a new hearing device? Okay.
Okay. Seeing no other items, no other people wishing to address the council for, um, public comment, we're going to go to council announcements. Mike, Eddie?
Madam Mayor, I think you probably were gonna cover, I was gonna tell them about Community Day. On the fifteenth, at the fairgrounds, they have International Community Day.
Kerr McGee Center.
Okay. At Kerr McGee Center at five o'clock, I do believe they're gonna have the International Community Day. So we're asking everybody to come and get to know one another and sharing each other's different ethnicity and background. And that was all I had.
That's an excellent, excellent, fun thing to do, where you can come and eat for free. People, restaurants bring their food, people bring their food. Come and eat for free and get to know each other. I enjoyed it. It was so wonderful for the past couple of years, and I thank, uh, Matthew and Yolanda Alexander and their team that is doing this. So please, consider coming out, enjoying dancing, seeing ethnic clothing, and all that. It's great fun. Okay, Paulus, did you have any? Lindsay?
The Parade of Flags is Saturday, uh, at nine o'clock, and then there's also, uh, memorial service on ni- on the evening of nine eleven as well. So, just to let everyone know that those things are coming up. The parade's up. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. I did wanna, um, give you a couple of items that came to me. One was, um, as you may know, and some of you did, donate to the Yerkeson Fire Recovery and, and repair, whether you donated dollars or, or items. This is a report from the Yerkeson Fire Fund that, and how they spent a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars of actual donated money. And of that, our thirty-six thousand is included in here. So there's some out front, if you'd like to see it, they have given us a report, and I thank them for their willingness to share and, and open public wh- how the money was spent. That means a lot, because many of us donated dollars, time, energy, and products, so thank you. I got a note from Vince Fong, and he said, "I got some good news for you." So I would like to share with you monies, I'm going to read, read it so you can see it. But, um, we are pleased to announce the following organizations located in your district have been received grant funding for the amount of two million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. List the organizations in a minute. These grant funds are funded from the Department of Parks and Recreation, off-highway vehicle funds, and are administered by the OHV Highway Motor Vehicle Recreation Division. As you may know, these grants and, and cooperative agreements and programs are in integral to the part of the OH, the Off-Road Vehicle Division. The previ- the, the projects awarded within your district will provide great benefit to the citizens of California, your constituents in particular, and OHV activities provide an economic contribution to the state and its local economy. The Bureau of Land Management, the Bakersfield Division, got fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. The BLM Ridgecrest Field Office got three hundred and ninety-one thousand and ten dollars. City of, um, Porterville Parks and Recreation Leisure Service got a hundred thousand and sixty dollars. The Desert, um, Group Search and Rescue Volunteers got forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-six thou- thousand dollars. The Friends of Jawbone, one million, five hundred thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. International Racing Rescue Crew, nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Inyo County Sheriff's Department, forty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. And the Ridgecrest Police Department got seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So those of you who spend money, uh, and pay money to the state for the use of your vehicles know part of that money went to fund many wonderful organizations. And as time goes on, we're going to hear more about what these organization, organizations are going to do with their dollars, and I thank everyone for that. I would like to talk briefly about something else. This is a little bit, um, off-topic, for the most part, because we don't talk about murders inside the city of Ridgecrest very often, because they don't happen very often. But in the last three months, we've had three murders just outside the city of Ridgecrest, in the county. And I am going to ask for a committee to get together to talk about how, why, and what we can do to prevent this. Sometimes, I believe, things happen because it's easy, and I'm not pointing fingers at our sheriff, young blood, that he staffs his, he is an elected officer, he's an elected official. We vote him in and out of office. I want to talk about how staffing is considered in East Kern County. I realize, and, and, um, Captain McGough, if you would add to this, if you could, or feel that you would, would want to, and, um, Chief Strand, as in your former capacity, if you would respond to this. Our police respond, as we can, as needed, to any emergency situation. If we are tied up here in the city with some event, whatever happens in the county must wait until we can get to it. But we have had three murders just outside our city limits. I think it's time for us to demand of the county, of the sheriffs, to stand up and be accountable for the, the representation and the service we receive. Uh, I talked to Supervisor Gleason, and he said, "I cannot tell our sheriff how to stretch his department out. I ca- will not tell him, it is not my job to tell him. I can pass along comments. I will do the best I can, I hear what you say, but I am not willing to stand up and see more and more people murdered in our area because we don't have the response." Now, as someone in the sheriff's department said to me, "Do you think one more officer?" Because there are many times at night, and, and Captain, if you would address this, that we do not have any service over here at all. There are some times, it's as early as late afternoon, when they go to take care of something else and they're gone. Or it's sometimes late at night, when they go to take care of the Kern River Valley and leave us here alone. I think it is our responsibility, as a city of Ridgecrest, as residents of the county, to say, "We matter, too." And to assume that we don't, assume that our police department will always be there to take care of us, is wrong on our parts, unfair to our police officers, and unfair to the city. Will we be there when we can? You bet. We must, we are a team, we work together, we work well with the county, we work well with the sheriff's department, but this is not working. And so I would like to get a group of people that are willing to talk about this, try to find solutions, and Captain, if you would talk about-
Madam Mayor, before you ask staff to come up and talk on this topic, uh, respectfully, this is not on the agenda. Uh, this, this point is supposed to be reserved for, for announcements, and I think, I'm concerned that, um, making this into something more than an announcement might be a, perceived as a violation of the Brown Act.
Okay, I don't want to do that. Don't want to do that. Is there a way that the, the captain can talk to us in a meeting, then, that we set up, to talk about the coverage we have and what our responses-
Yeah, this would be appropriate for an agenda of a future meeting, perhaps a committee meeting.
Okay. All right, sir, sorry I drug you up here. Not my intent to embarrass you or any of us. I do not want to violate the Brown Act, but I do want to get it out, and I want it discussed. And I want us to talk about it from another point of view. What we're doing there is, what responsibility do we as family and citizens have to our young people in teaching respect for law and order? So, okay, that's my item.
Madam, Madam Mayor, there, there is gonna be a, uh, community meeting put on by KLA, the Kern Law Enforcement Association, here in town on September fourteenth. So you may want to direct those individuals that have comments and issues regarding that, public safety in the county, to go there to express their concerns.
Okay.
We, we have posted, uh, that flyer on our first Facebook page, the Ridgecrest Police Department Facebook page. That'd probably be a great location for them to start at.
Okay, folks, you got something to say? You got solutions? You have ideas? Let's show up there and not just sit back and say it's somebody else's job to do, because it isn't. It's ours.
September fourteenth at what time?
Yeah, September fourteenth, at, uh, from five to seven, at Desert Valleys Federal Credit Union, one hundred East Ward Avenue. Uh, if you want further details, you can go to the KLA Facebook page, you can go to the Ridgecrest Police Department Facebook page. Both the flyers are posted, and they're also listed on the front page, I believe, of the Daily Independent.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, I'd like to thank all of you who have put up with me, um, my surgery, um, my chemo. I have had my last chemo. I have no cancer. I s- You all may help to make it happen. I thank my doctors, I thank everyone, but it is because of your prayers and your concern, and I thank you for running my requests. No cards, no gifts, no anything, even though you overwhelmed me with everything, I want to say thank you, because, um, I'm still gonna look a little fuzzy here for a while, but, uh, that's the way it goes, so you'll just have to put up with it. And I, I thank you. I have, um, one more, um, surg- one more doctor's visit on Thursday, and I think I'm gonna get all my tubes taken care of, so you don't have to see me holding myself like this. So, thank you all, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Okay, the next item is, um, uh, the Consent Calendar. All items on the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine by city staff and will be approved in one motion if no member of the council, the public wishes to comment or make, or, or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone- If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, then that item may be removed from the Consent Calendar and will be considered separately with public comment before action is taken. Do any members of the council wish to have any of the items pulled? I'm going to read each one of them. Item number two. Proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successory Redevelopment Agency and Financing Authority Housing Authority Regular Meeting on dated August 16th. Item number three. Proposed action to approve a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council authorizing the destruction of certain accounting records. Item number four. Proposed action to approve a resolution to accept funding from the Transit System Safety, Security, and Disaster Response Account under the California Transit Security Grant Program for the Inyo Kern Transit Hub Station Fencing Project and Authority, and authorize the interim city manager, Ron Strand, or his designee, to execute all documents to obtain CTS GP funding. Number five. Proposed action to approve a resolution authorizing the interim city manager to sign the Notice of Completion on the City of Ridgecrest Handicap Access Improvement Project, CD #17121. Authorize the city clerk to file a Notice of Completion and authorizing the release of retention in the amount of $4,980 to the contractor, Dave Bacco, 30 days after recordation of the Notice of Completion. Is there any council member, like, any item pulled?
Four.
Is there any other?
Nine and 11.
It's only two, three, and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two, three, four, and five. Okay, is there any public who would like any item pulled? Okay, a notice to... A motion to approve items two, three, and five.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, number four. Mr. Sphere.
Okay. So I just had a couple of questions on this. First, I wanted to know, why do we need the fence? Has there been some incidents that have been occurring? And then I was also, in the agenda packet, there's a letter saying that our project is eligible, but it says currently there are no state funds available to support or reimburse your project. So I was...
That's correct. If they want the certificates of insurance and the resolution from the council, that they would approve the acceptance of the funds when funds do come available. And as far as the fencing project itself, we're so remote from that particular project. Fencing is thought to be a... As far as security, we have facilities out there, including a restroom, and we think that that could attract graffiti. And so we thought it'd be in the best interest of the facility itself to actually secure that site with fencing.
So would the bus drivers carry keys to the fence?
That's correct. First one out every morning, they'd open it up.
Got it. And then, so we would go ahead and pay the money and then hope somewhere down the road that they would reimburse us? Or we're not going to do anything until the money is available?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
You answered yes to two questions that were kind of different. One, we're not going to do it until they reimburse us, or we're not going to do it until we have the money?
That's correct.
We're not going to do it until we have the money?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought I understood. Okay, thank you. Is there any council comment on this item? Is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
My question is partially answered.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Oh, Dave Matthews, I'm sorry. My address is on file. I think I heard you say that it would be locked during the night, but then open during the day or something, or unlocked during the day?
When it's fenced, our first driver out there would open the gates.
Okay. Because I'm not sure how that interacts out there with the different buses. And I was just wondering how that was going to work.
We're always the first out.
Okay. It would have to be... Well, then, who's going to close it? Somebody's going to close it?
Our driver, the last pickup of the day.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Is there any council comment?
I move approval of item four.
Second.
Mr. Bauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Number six. Proposed action to approve a resolution for the allocation of $65,000 in TAM funding to procure critical information technology systems, infrastructure. You are going to share with us your... Staff's recommendation and the discussion of having a public address system here, or a system that allows us to vote simultaneously and secretly until it's out.
That's the next one, ma'am.
Yeah, number six.
Did I skip? Thank you. All right, please, sir.
In the proposed one, I apologize because Matt is extremely sick, and I told him to stay home. So if you hear Gary come over the microphone, he's there to help me out. So if I say, you know, thingamajigs and stuff like that, it's because that's what I know him as. So what we need to do is upgrade our infrastructure on our security systems and technology here at the city. And in this would include replacing the switches that control the inward and outward-bound communications in and out of the city, as well as replacing our current firewall. And all of these systems, most of them, are going upwards of 10 years old now, which in the IT world is old, they're outdated, and they're constantly giving problems to the IT guys. So that's what we would like to do with that. Part of it is upgrade our security, which the switches and the firewall help with. And then also, we need to upgrade our security on some of the building, such as cameras and door locks and stuff like that.
Thank you. Is there discussion from council? Questions or discussion from the public? Sorry, Captain, I sent you off in the wrong way. Won't be the first, won't be the last.
Yes, Dave Matthews again. This is an item which kind of reinforces something that I had mentioned a while back with respect to all of the infrastructure that the city has. And that is, rather than transferring funds that could be used maybe for something else, we should have had a depreciation fund for all of the infrastructure. Now, maybe you can do some separate depreciation funds for specific items which have a different lifespan, but you could possibly also make them transferable. So that when something comes up and another item or another structure needs more fund than is available, you could transfer between the two, the various depreciation funds. But I think you need to start working this, considering working this kind of a fund into your budgets. So if I was going to make a suggestion on this, I would add that right now.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Scott Miller. After this is all said and done, will the... You mentioned cameras. Are those going to be repurposed, or are they going to be thrown away? Can they be given to, like, one of the schools to use for projects, or one of the special projects going on in the city?
We could repurpose those at the direction of the council, if we so choose. The schools' cameras are pretty good, a lot better than these ones. So maybe some other organization could utilize them.
Okay. This is, as long as, in this day and age of recycle and reuse, let's just not throw them away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Jordan Jarvis. I'm actually a resident in Johannesburg.
Could you get down a little bit closer to the microphone?
Jordan Jarvis, and I'm actually a resident in Johannesburg, but this whole region of the county affects my well-being, especially our law enforcement. And knowing from what can be accomplished with regulation of cannabis, we could create a budget specifically to help with this problem. It could fund and finance all of the captain's needs towards his infrastructure desire for the community. It could provide that safety for your officers. It can provide a lot for this community, and in specific for our law enforcement. We desperately need sheriffs and law enforcement in Johannesburg. We also had a number of murders there in the last couple of years, and it's not okay. I thoroughly agree, our safety and well-being of our citizens is huge. Without it, what do we have? I mean, I believe we're still in America, and that's what it's all about. And without that, we've got nothing. I hope that the council and the members of our community will be open to a specific budget for cannabis that can help with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Remember, the discussion we're having tonight, unless I misunderstood you, Mr. Jarvis was right now, was on this funding for the critical information technology.
Right. The council showed...
But when you referred to the cannabis, I was wondering...
This industry, if you regulate this industry, you can create a budget that will...
If you're going to talk, please come up here, because otherwise they can't hear it on television.
If you regulate the cannabis industry in Ridgecrest, you can specifically create budgets to help with the city's infrastructure, to help with the Ridgecrest Police Department, to help improve our schooling and education, to help our roadways, to help a number of areas in which our community is severely struggling in. And by small regulations, I'm not talking 500 shops like Los Angeles, I'm talking a very reasonable amount for the amount of people here who need the cannabis, for the people who are touristing through our community.
Let's put that on the cannabis item.
I agree, but it's for a specific budget to fix this infrastructure issue.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, is there any other public comment on this particular item? Is there any other council comments on this item? Motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Bauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Captain, now where I was trying to point you. Thank you.
Staff was tasked to look at and evaluate some council voting systems. We looked at the one similar to the Water District, Rica and Matt, as well as the one that Mr. Neal kindly provided to us, and the one that we're also proposing. The two systems were very similar, very similar in cost. So we're asking that approval to get the money to acquire this system and install it. The reason why it's a little more is because we will still have to put in some infrastructure in here, such as a monitor, so that when the council does vote, it would go onto the monitor so the public could see it. But just waiting for what direction you want us to head in.
Council comments?
I was... I'm glad that you made mention of the monitors. I was wondering how did we get to 5,000? Because originally, we had talked with Mr. Neal, it was a couple hundred dollars. So to clarify that, that makes a little more sense.
Well, I think Mr. Neal was talking about building one, sir. Is that... It was kind of like building one?
I'll tell you one good...
Okay. So Mr. Neal had actually provided us with a link as well to look at these systems. And they're very... They're very good systems that could be implemented right away and utilized.
I wasn't here when you first discussed this item last month, but I still don't understand the need for it.
I guess I'd like to ask the city attorney. You represent a lot of cities. Do most cities do this?
Yes. And let me tell you that having a system like this could help avoid errors that could cause violations of the Brown Act under the new laws. Remember, a couple of years ago, we reported that the law was changed so that the affirmative voting of each member has to be reported to the public at the time of the vote. That happens, obviously, when we do a roll call vote. But because there's the potential for human error in that reporting, this would improve, I think, the reporting in a way that would make it clear to the public what exactly happened in all cases. Unless somebody hits the wrong button, I suppose, or something like that, but...
I guess I've never heard from a member of the public complaining that they didn't know how we voted.
I know in Bakersfield, I had made a couple of calls as well to see what they do, and it seems to be pretty popular in Bakersfield. It works, and it puts the sole... The main issue that, I guess we came up with, Mike, was that it puts the sole responsibility of the vote on each individual member at that instant time without being unduly influenced from the person to the left of them or right of them, or however it works. We looked at three pages. Rica did an excellent job of looking at what 50 cities did.
Yeah, and I studied that. I studied that. And most of those cities, the mayor voted last, as I recall. I said in that report, a majority of the cities that that report showed, the mayor voted last, which is what we used to do years ago. I'm really flattered that you guys think I have influence on you guys over how you're going to vote.
No. Well, the synopsis of all those 50 was that there was about five to six methodologies, but all of them had pros and cons and subject to, you know, pros and cons. And the only way to get rid of all the pro and con is to do an instant vote. Everybody has to make their own individual decision. It just seems to be very objective, fair. There's no way to get around it. That's it. So, I mean, I think it's kind of where it came up. And five grand, to me, is little or nothing to have a nice piece of equipment that we're going to have probably for, you know, 10 years, till the bulb breaks. I think it'll save time overall with all the voting, too. And I think we could even use it for all sorts of things, that we do the normal roll call. It'd just be faster. So if it saves 10 minutes of meeting times, all the number of meetings we have during the year, I think it's worth that. Anyway, that's my take.
Any other council comment?
One other quick comment. Just, I don't know if the Madam Mayor passed this on already, but for what it's worth, there was a request, I think, made by the board of the GSA who shares these chambers to have this kind of system... Well, they didn't say they'd pay for it.
I was going to say, they...
But they did request it. I think because perhaps some of them have a similar voting system in their...
That was what the county said, Inyo and Kern said.
Right. They use that.
Donate to our fund.
Mr. Neal?
Yes, so just so you have additional information, since I noted the pricing of 5,000, and I had already looked at the price of the electoral vote system, I went in and called those people today and got ahold of a gentleman's first name, Bob Ben, and he said, "Well, obviously, that's 2009 pricing, so it's going to be more than that." I said, "Well, is it going to, you know, get over 5,000?" And he said, "No, no way." So he's... The owner is in the hospital. I've got an email to him. I will forward that to Mr. McLaughlin with finalized pricing for that system. Now, as far as comment about the systems, the other one, the option vote, I think, is computer-based. It said it was a PowerPoint add-in, I believe. I think there's going to be an unnecessary learning curve, and then you've got your potentials for things... and then you've got your potentials for things that aren't gonna work with software. This electoral vote is just buttons and wires. It has a display which you could put up here on the back wall somewhere. It shows the vote of each member. All you need is your little handheld thing to vote with. The city clerk needs her, her control thing so that she can reset, set it, you know, after each vote. It's, you know, it's what I had in mind when I brought, you know, I mentioned that for, for the, you know, hand-built system. But it's nice, you know, pretty panel display and, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And they've got an option where you can change the names in front of the buttons, in front of the, I'm sorry, the lights, so that when you have planning commission, school board, GSA in here, whatever, you put up a different board in front of the lights, and then you go for it. And so I'm gonna give this to Mr. McLaughlin. He's got the gentleman's email address. They also have a, they will give you a system to try out for five days. And if you don't like it, you can send it back and get, you know, the deposit that you gave them, you can get it back. So you can get it in your hands, get everybody together up here and try it out if you want to. So that's, that's the information I think maybe you guys weren't aware of about this and your decision. So as far as Mr. Mauer influencing the vote, if I was mayor, you would heavily influence me and Mr. Mauer. So I would want this system a lot, you know, I just have a problem there, so. Anyway, a little lightheartedness. So otherwise, I'm fully supportive of this. And I think just for general principles, it's best that we get away from the, you know, aye, nay, aye, nay, in whatever the order is, and everybody gets to put their vote, to do their vote in pretty much anonymity from the other members. And that gets everybody's decision to be objective as far as what they think about it and not what somebody else thinks about it. And you could obviously have your full discussion prior to that. So you're probably gonna know everybody feels about it for the most part anyway. But when it comes right down to it, I've seen several cases of, you know, votes that were made that were heavy on somebody's mind, and they had to stop. They had to think about it. And so I just think this, this would be a good idea overall.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
I think, Mr. Neal, I think the difference between the option power and the electoral vote was the, correct me if I'm wrong, Rika. The option power is able to keep historical data.
Yes.
It records it, records the vote.
Okay, well, if you like that idea, then, you know, fine, go with that. But I've just learned to shy away from computer-based things. There's too many avenues for breakdowns, and, you know, simple buttons and, you know, switches don't generally break down, you know, very often.
Well, one of the things we do know that if it does break down, oh, we can go back and say aye or no or whatever.
Absolutely.
We have been doing that for a while.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Fifty years.
Yeah. And Mike, I wanted you to do it for a dollar 2.98, but, you know. Okay. All right. Please.
Counsel, Madam Mayor. Mike and I don't normally disagree, but today happens to be one of those. I see this as a frugal method, message, is that it's $5,000 we don't need to spend, and every dollar we save is always a good thing. I just don't see an advantage to it, something we're gonna have to pay to maintain later. It's gonna break in two years, five years, whatever, we're gonna have to buy another one. I just don't see the problem to be great enough to spend the money on, even though it's only $5,000. But a dollar saved is a dollar earned. The pressure about being the last one, I can understand that. But I think most of the council members ought to have enough courage in their own to stand with what they're gonna vote in anyway. And if they don't, then they have to deal with it. They have to deal with the public and the people they represent. I just don't see an advantage to it, and I don't wanna see them spending that money on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. I've never done this before, sorry.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. I do see plenty of advantages.
Would you identify yourself first?
Oh, I am Sidney Bradley Ruth. I'm resident to Ridgecrest. I do see an advantage, many advantages, to updating our voting system, primarily because technology is always advancing. Every two years, it doubles itself. So why don't we try something new? That was about it.
Thank you, and welcome. One of the reasons I asked for this to be on the agenda, because I was really wanting to not necessarily go get a highfalutin system, but to not always vote the same way, one, two, three, four, five, because it seemed like, it just seemed unfair. And I'd like, like, one time you're one, one time you're two, just rotate it. But this is what came out, so I don't know as I necessarily think we need a highfalutin system, but I don't know that it's gonna kill us. I just wanted an alternate way of recording the voting. So do we have any other council comments? Any other public comments? A motion?
I move approval of the voting system.
I second.
Mr. Mauer?
To show that I don't have the influence people think I vote no.
Mr. Thomas?
To confirm you don't, yes.
Mayor Breeden?
To confirm, I wanna save the $5,000, but I still want to. I still wanna have the autonomy of voting. I have to say no.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, I want it.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
With three ayes, two noes, motion carries.
Okay, that was a good one. All right, the next, thank you, Captain. The next item is discussion and provide direction to the city's representative on the board of the Union Wells Valley Groundwater Authority. I have that item on each month. We do not have the agenda yet. I do not know what's on the agenda. Do you as staff know, Keith?
Don't we normally talk about it at the next meeting?
Yeah, I think it would be, we would.
We only have one, one time.
Yeah, I'm not aware, I don't think we've prepared an agenda yet, and I don't recall offhand what the plan is.
There is nothing that I know of. So I'm gonna ask if we will just keep this on the agenda and use it for the next time. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna make some procedural changes here. I know many of you were here to, to address this item number, number nine. I don't wanna spend all night doing this, and I'm asking you all, if somebody has said the same thing before you, to please do not repeat word for word what they said. Do it differently. I'd like to limit the discussion to a half hour, 45 minutes tops. If we see at the end of that time, there's still many of you have not had the opportunity to speak, we will go ahead and I will let, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our mayor pro tem. And because I have, I, this is my, again, personal. This is my first day at work. I've been at work since 6 o'clock this morning, and I am barely able to keep my head up. So I am going to turn the meeting over, and I may or may not stay. But are you making a phone call?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna be tranced because I can't drive. So I'm sorry to do this without any notice. I would just ask one thing. When we do make this decision, whatever we make, let's look at keeping as many options open that we can. So, sir, if you would take this meeting over, I, again, my apologies to everyone. Thank you.
Item nine is proposed action to draft a letter to the Kern County Planning Commission in providing a recommendation with the Kern County Cannabis Land Use Ordinance Options. I might add to that is we've already voted as a council not to allow this in the city limits. I believe we voted that last year, is that not correct? We're gonna be coming back in two weeks with our version of the retail commercial sale. We prohibited medical marijuana, commercial cultivation and sales, but we still have to do the follow-up for recreational retail sales and cultivation. So right now, the county is considering this, and so we were gonna vote to send or not send a letter in support or opposition. So that's what it's open, any council comment?
I might wait until after I hear from the public.
You asked for council comment?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a prepared statement that I would like to read, please, on this, because I think this issue is very important. I wholeheartedly agree with our acting chief of police. I recommend we approve the letter that he has prepared banning all marijuana cultivation and sales in Kern County. To begin with, it is well-understood that the general health and safety of the public should be priority for any elected official, and as such, I plan to honor the oath of office I took and carefully look after the best interest of the people who elected me, and that means young and old. I could never use a well-known human vice as a tool for economic development. A vice is defined as a moral failing or a bad habit. Traditional examples quoted in urban dictionaries all over the internet include drinking alcohol, smoking tobacco, gambling and card games. Vices come in all shapes and sizes, and marijuana is no exception. In fact, it has replaced some of the others in terms of popularity. According to federal law, recreational pot's illegal, period, that's it. So how in the world cities or counties can stoop so low as to consider making a profit by selling an illegal, mind-altering drug, to me is beyond comprehension. To me, this is criminal in itself. There are thousands of other ways to make an honest buck, and pot ain't one of them. In the old days, we had a saying, when things were going absolutely terrible, my grandmother used to say, everything's going to pot. I say this is still true today, even though few definitions have changed. The adverse effects of pot, especially on younger, developing minds, is empirically proven. We'd be here for a month to go over that. I know we're gonna have some headshakers, especially in the young people. I don't need to recall case after case of our most reputable hospitals and schools from around the country who all clearly explain the many dangers of marijuana. I'm certain that many of you have numerous cases on your own showing otherwise, so I'm not going there. But in short, most experts historically agree, since I was in high school in the 70s. So no, you don't, I'm telling you what I've known since the 70s. I'm older than many of the younger people here today who are probably looking at other things. Historically, experts have agreed that pot-smoking regularly and heavily leads to brain damage, addiction, and has always been a gateway drug. At the very least, folks, it makes people lethargic. It destroys their motivation. I think we can all agree on a few things, that we all know someone who smoked pot heavily and regularly. Heavy users are slower on the uptake, their memory's shot, and they're much less motivated, period. I, I don't care. Is this what we want to encourage in our society? And besides, here's one for you, on the lighter side, it stinks. If this thing gets passed, people will be toking up in our public restrooms. They'll stink more than they do now and be disgusting. Is that what we want for dessert after a nice meal? I don't. All right, I watched a Mike Rowe, the Dirty Jobs guy, on a national news show talking the other night. And when it was all over, they asked him one thing. Mike, if you had one thing to tell young people about the most important thing to do about getting a job today when applying immediately, it was no downtime whatsoever. Mike said, well, they gotta quit using drugs, number one, because 50% of them are knocked off the application list immediately, instantly, in the trash. They can't get hired because they're using drugs. Now that's when pot's officially legal. What in the heck is the rate gonna be if we're gonna make it legal everywhere? 50% can't get jobs now. So for the young people who might look at me as an old fart, who is not with it and hadn't got a clue, and blah, 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 I'm trying to help you get jobs so that you can be productive members and have great families and have a nice lifestyle. And I don't think this is the way to get there. Here, neither does Mike Rowe. Here is something alarming. New estimates are coming out daily, daily, showing that in the very, very near future, much as half of our workforce will be replaced by automation, especially physical labor. All the good jobs of the future will be reserved for those with advanced thinking skills. Well, now how in the heck's that gonna work? If drug usage goes up while we're automating everything, in the near future, we're gonna have a world of millions and millions of people with no place to go and nothing to do. The fact is, we all need our brains in order to survive. The young need their brains to finish their school or some accreditation. Middle-aged people need their brains to keep their families afloat and to deal with all the thousands of stresses of everyday life. And old people need all of their brains to find a bathroom instead of walking into the closet. Who doesn't need all of their brains? Now, I do agree with the many positive uses of marijuana for proven medical purposes. I think its value here is significant and far less expensive and more effective, and in many cases, less addicting painkiller alternative to today's opiates driven by the pharmaceutical industry. I support this, provided that, but there's underlines here, provided underlined, that it is highly, highly underlined, underlined, regulated, and strictly, strictly underlined, underlined, enforced. However, listen, everybody, this has been proven to be extremely difficult to do. I think all of you in this room, everyone would agree that this so-called war on drugs that I've been hearing about since the 60s has been a dismal failure nationwide for many reasons, since it started by President Nixon in 1970. So I'm really not sure why regulating or enforcing medical marijuana would be any different today. The fact is, once you allow a tiny crack in the door, and you got two or three great big 400-pound lobby guys with tons of money and push and go-go and lobbying power pushing, it's just a matter of time before the door comes busting wide open and anything goes. And that's just a fact. So the miracle, the medical marijuana, where I support it, trying to enforce it and make it unbelievably restricted and, you know, and serve a definitive need without all of this stuff, I don't know. It hasn't worked since the 60s. I don't know what evidence we have to show it's gonna work from here on. On the surface, let's talk about money. On the surface, this thing looks great. But let's forget about all the money the county's gonna make. I say it's hogwash. I contend that for every dollar they claim it'll make, the county's gonna lose five times, five to one, in loss of money due to the general dumbing down of our society. Our business productivity is gonna suffer. Young minds will be demotivated and become addicted. Our traffic deaths and crime rates will soar tragically. Colorado's supposed to be the big, the big pillar of how it's all working, and study after study after study is showing problem after problem after problem. No perceived money system in America is worth damaging the minds of our young people, period. That's it. I think the matter is of massive importance and one like the casino issue that should be voted on by the entire population and not just a few. This is too important. And the reason is because bureaucracies have a way all their own. Our citizens should decide this massively controversial issue. And I invite each and every one of you to stand up in front of the mirror while getting ready for work. And just ask yourself a very simple question. Pot's been around a long, long time. This is nothing new. The question is, when you look at all the pros and all the cons, do you really, really want this for your children? Do you want this for your grandchildren? And do you want this for our society as a whole? I don't know. I personally believe that if we all did that drill personally, without any lobbyists and without any undue influence, and we walk out of the bathroom and talk to our spouses, a significant other, or friends, I think we're gonna find, we're gonna answer no. But maybe that's just me. But right now, at this moment in time, I strongly approve the letter that the assistant chief has prepared banning all marijuana cultivation and sales in Kern County, but I really think that the citizens need to vote. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna open it up for the public comment now?
Hi, my name is Darlene Rotana. I live here in Buttermilk Acres. I used to work for General Dynamics. I built 30,000 of the eye-of-the-stinger missiles. I have, and I will continue to smoke pot. I very little, but I'd much rather boil the stems in the pot and make a tea. For my husband would be dead right now if it wasn't for the medical marijuana. He was, he has been on Norcos, all kinds of medication. He was up to 220 pounds. He couldn't carry his weight. He is now allowed, because he has a medical marijuana cart issuing, allowing him to go get his medicine. He is alive today because of this. He is alive today because of this, and I say yes on B, we do need to have this. I'm a graduate, I've gone to college, I have many degrees, but I'm 65. I can't do no more, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you guys doing? My name is Anthony.
Speak up a little louder, please.
Oh, my name is Anthony, East Kern County resident. Good speech, I did like that speech, straight out of the '70s. Currently, there are approximately 4,000 registered medical marijuana patients in the Ridgecrest area, in case you guys didn't know. These guys are disabled, there are vets, there are seniors, some of our most vulnerable community. They're suffering from Alzheimer's, AIDS, cancer, glaucoma, Parkinson, PTSD, chronic pain. The Center for Disease Control, this is a real fact, says that 24.4 million Americans are treating themselves with marijuana for PTSD. 100 million Americans are treating themselves for chronic pain. Usually, these ailments are conditioned with opiates. These are given, they're given opiates, and these are our vets who are in chronic pain, PTSD, dying at a rate of 22 people a day. The American Medical Association said whether it's medical marijuana, opiate deaths go down by 24.5%. So I don't know how many people are dying here of opiates, but I would, I think that they would, might wanna know that, and these are your constituents. Without marijuana, these 4,000 people are gonna have to drive 120 miles to get safe and affordable access to marijuana. That's a long ways, guys. By banning or taking it away, you're making them drive, you're making them go on a very, very dangerous road, or you're gonna have to make them face a street dealer. That'd be handing over a billion-dollar industry to the black market instead of regulating and know who's owning that mom-and-pop shop down the street. It's very, very important. According to Kern County's own EIR report, that's the Environmental Impact Report, that's L'Oreal in the County Planning Commission, great lady, she put together in that report low, low numbers, putting it down to the most 10% in the percentile of amount of cultivation and amount of dispensaries and grow areas. And with those numbers, that's $39.5 million that Kern County really needs. That's $900,000, almost a million dollars to Kern County students. That's $200,000 for Sheriff's Department in much need. If we decide to ban it, that's $2.7 million to put together a bare-bones marijuana taskman enforcement group. $2.7 million? How much is Ridgecrest gonna give to that $2.7 million through Kern County to enforce that ban? You need to take that also into consideration. They, he said, that gentleman over there with his speech, said that Colorado was failing, and in the report that you guys used, that Rocky High Mountain report, which has lots of holes, which is a biased report, you guys got copies from Forbes magazines, that's the same magazine you guys used to quote in your report to why you wanna write a letter to ban. That same magazine wrote two scathing reports on how that Rocky Mountain High report is biased. And on top of that, he called, he even says in that report that the governor says it was a bad idea, according to the LA Times, you guys all got a copy of this now. The governor who called legalization reckless now says Colorado's pot industry is working. He cites that there was no uptake in additional use, and that Rocky High Mountain report, it said up, use went up by 11%. The national effort, the national average is 20%. So according to Rocky Mountain, it actually went down 9% among teen use. But that's what you get when you get a biased report. I hope you guys take into consideration the information you guys were given, and don't turn in a letter based on a biased report, and don't forget your citizens here, at least 4,000 registered medical marijuana patients.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Dawn Sanders, and the report that he's talking about, I have copies of for, I have five copies for the councilmembers I'd like to handle. I am a member of Ridgecrest, California. I have been a Ridgecrest Indian Wells Valley resident for over 49 years. I graduated from Burrows in 1976. I would like to state that California voters passed the Compassionate Use Act of 1996. Since that time, California voters have upheld the right for patients to have use for cannabis. We patients have waited for California lawmakers to solidify our rights. Now California voters approved legal cannabis for everyone over 18 years of age. You are 21 years of age, I apologize, 21 years of age. You, our representatives, for us citizens, have to now speak up for your medical patients, at least, and allow us safe access to our medication here at a proven, local, safe facility. For seven years, this January, our co-op that we get our medication from, known as County Line Co-op, has proven to the citizens and you that it has been able to stay open for seven years, and there has been zero crime that has been linked to the County Line Co-op. So for you now to back Kern County to close all facilities, allowing us safe access to medical marijuana, does not seem right to me, because our state has had over 20 years to get in place regulation for us patients, and for us to have safe access, like you said, I don't wanna go to a back-street person's home that deals with cocaine to get my medical marijuana. That is what you're telling me that I am now going to have to do if you back Kern County. So if it is you who stand in our way as a patient, then I will have to take what legal steps I must to have you and Kern County uphold my legal rights, for if you cause County Line to close, it will be a hardship physically and emotionally for me. This is our notice to you, my representatives, to allow County Line, if nothing else, to stay open and allow us free, safe access to our medication. It is not a drug that, I don't wanna go back to morphine. I do not want to go back to being on seven different medications nine times a day. I was a police officer, sir, in Newport News, Virginia, for two years. I would much rather have a safe access for my citizens of my town to go to than having to go to some back-door, dark alley to get my medication, or to have to drive for over 15 miles or 100 miles for me to be able to get access with broken rods in my back. I don't think that you are being very fair to your patients of this town of Ridgecrest, California. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Samantha Elizabeth McCroftlin. I'm a copywriter with WriteSoft, a computer-linguistics company, and I live in Johannesburg. And I just wanted to say that I strongly disagree with sending any letter that would discourage people in the community from being able to get the medicine or even the recreational marijuana that they need, because I think it'd be great for the community. Thank you very much.
I'm Dr. Everett W. Whitzel. I came to Ridgecrest 20 years ago as medical director of Sage Community Health Center, a rural health center for the poor people on a sliding scale. And poor people need health care, but they don't need cannabis unless everything else, which is a better product, is tried first. Let me just say this: We cannot determine our heredity, genetics, endowments, but we can control our lifestyle. I was born in 1934, the year of the highest unemployment of the Great Depression. My parents were married two years before the lowest economic point of the Great Depression, and I was a working student, working and studying from third grade, milking cows twice a day, seven days a week, and all the way then through two colleges, two high schools, where I could work and earn in a Christian setting. I was a working student, but I chose to stay home and work on the farm following my eighth grade. Why? Because my parents saw my grandpa lose his farm in the Great Depression. My grandpa, at the same age I am right now, 83 years of age, quit chewing tobacco at that age, having started at age seven. Through the years, as a physician, I've helped many hundreds of people stop smoking nicotine products, chewing tobacco, smoking it, in India, as well as in the United States and many states within the United States, because my wife and I were married 60 years ago, 1959, when we graduated from Andrews University. She, a two-year elementary, myself, four-year biology major in Michigan. She came from Illinois, I came from Wisconsin, where we both have lived. I spent time in Montana. We lived in 27 different places for our first 40 years of marriage, but the last 20 years have been here in this beautiful community, a beautiful place next to a federal institution which it's illegal to have cannabis. The recommendation is correct. In this setting, it's a family-oriented, professional setting, this very important. And let me say this: I was a working student. I stayed home, and my older brother and I ran our 15th place where we were living, share crop farming in Wisconsin, stayed home and ran the farm. First time that we had rubber tire tractors, because my dad went and worked and earned money to buy a tractor. Before that, my older brother and I each had a team of horses. But I can tell you one thing: Each individual, when they're young, middle-aged, and older, make decisions, very important decisions. I decided to go back to school after one year working on the farm, and as I say, as a working student, I was able to graduate, and I came to Loma Linda. I graduated four times.
I'm sorry, doctor, your time is up. Your time is up.
It's very important that you, as a council, follow the recommendation for health and safety for our community here, adjacent to a federal institution and a family-oriented. It's important because marijuana smoke is more dangerous, causes emphysema faster than tobacco smoke. And yet, in 1946, two years before I graduated from elementary school, my classmates' grandmother was smoking cigarettes, was smoking tobacco for asthma. And cannabis is used inappropriate today for many patients. I have a PhD in...
You're done, sir. There are many other people who speak.
...in neural anatomy, and it's important, it's important that we follow the advice and recommendation of our elected protective people.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Rice. I'm a citizen of Ridgecrest, and please consider the impact on the well-being of our residents. I am an epileptic and have used cannabis as my sole medicine for the last five months. Before I found this miracle medicine, I was basically a medical experiment. No medicines are currently used explicitly for epilepsy, and none of them were designed for epilepsy. The United Epilepsy Foundation recognizes cannabis as having great medical utility for persons like myself whom suffer from epilepsy. I was diagnosed at 16 and have never been able to drive. Forcing me to go elsewhere to obtain my medication would be a great burden on myself. I know others in the community who have medical conditions and use marijuana as treatment. Over the years, I have had an increasing number of seizures and tried many medications, the results including making my seizures worse and side effects that made it impossible to carry out my daily activities. Being a vegetable, incredible anger issues from Keppra, being a parent with epilepsy has also been a great burden. Until now, I went from having up to five grand mal seizures per month to only having one seizure in the last four months. I'd like to read from the Epilepsy Foundation's website, and this is, anybody can very easily pull this up. It says, "The Epilepsy Foundation supports the rights of patients and families living with seizures and epilepsy to access physician-directed care, including medical marijuana. Nothing should stand in the way of patients gaining access to potentially lifesaving treatment. If a patient and their healthcare professionals feel the potential benefits for medical marijuana for uncontrolled epilepsy outweigh the risk, then families need to have that legal option now, not in five years or 10 years. For people living with severe uncontrolled epilepsy, time is not on their side. This is a very important, difficult, and personal decision that should be made by a patient and family working with their healthcare team." And I have to tell you, I am an alcoholic, and I have been sober for over five years, and I was sober four and a half years before I actually made the decision. I had been being told about medical marijuana for two years before I ever made the decision to try it. It's not a cop-out to have a vice. The Epilepsy Foundation believes that an end to seizure should not be determined by one zip code. This is right off their site. That's all I have. Thank you.
Can I ask the audience not to clap too much, because we have some hearing-disabled people in here, and when you clap, it's really causing problems for him. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm quite nervous. My name is Socorro Garcia, and I live in Johannesburg, only been there less than a year. I've been a Kern County resident for, I wanna say, 13 years. Previous to that, Orange County, since I arrived here in 1984. I was born and raised in Manila, Philippines. I was there during the martial law, and every year, I could hear my grandmother telling me, "We're going to the States, we're going to the States, we're going to the States," because there's opportunity there and real freedom. So got here, I was 17, watched my first presidential debate, it was Reagan and the other person, I don't remember. And then, of course, there was the war on drugs. I'm just sharing this with you, because I want you to know who I am and why I'm here. Anyways, fast forward, got married, no pot, unlike you, sir, I didn't, you know, I was the good girl, up until I got here. But seriously, though, pot was always a bad thing in my house. Better not be even caught with anything. But yet, during holidays, I would see my uncles, my aunts, drunk, fighting. And so as I was growing up, and I had my own family, I protected them from the evils of pot, but yet I became an alcoholic, because that's what I saw. I discovered pot, I started smoking pot about, when I moved to Kern County. I had ailments, it helped me, my niece, who was in all kinds of pills, got rid of them for a while. My niece, who was in all kinds of pills, got rid of them because when she wasn't smoking, she got all these pills, "Let's try this, let's try that, let's try this." Pot helped her, and she got off of I don't know how many, six or so. And I had ailments and whatnot, and I was a closet smoker for ten years, because in my profession, I'm a real estate agent. That's not acceptable. Well, guess what, folks? It's legal now. If I can go get a drink, I should be able to go and buy my pot for my health. And also, because it's my vice and I choose to do it. And that is what freedom is, sir. And you're talking about generalizations, how lazy, lethargic, or someone who's not motivated. I may only have a high school education, but I make more than a lot of doctors have ever made. Okay? And I think damaging minds, sir, that you, the whole council, you're damaging our young people by saying that we are not really free. Are we or are we not Californians? Do we have the right or don't we? And that's all I have.
Thank you.
My name is Zach Hall. I first moved into Kern County at about third grade. And I'll kind of laugh, because there's two things you kind of learn living in Inyo Kern. You're going to see some people on drugs, and you're going to not really have water at all. And my parents actually ran the well, and we would talk about and see and laugh about the fact that the water tables would drop month after month, and eventually week after week, it getting worse, until they decided that they needed to drill a deeper hole into the well. And that was because we get to see acres and acres of pistachio farms. Every day, nobody, I mean, I know, pistachios, I guess it's a really good snack that everyone enjoys, but I hear about these people making two million to four million dollars a year off of this cash crop, sucking our water from our county, and they live in Nevada or LA. And that's just an issue that gets to me. Another thing is, is that the only thing that would actually make me, that had made me lethargic was in freshman year, I broke my femur. And it wasn't until I graduated high school at eighteen, and with a pretty crappy eating disorder, a pretty, really bad sleeping, or insomnia, didn't get to bed till 4:00 AM at some points. And I was about 270 to 280 pounds because of that. It's been a year since I've had my medical license, and I'm at 200 pounds. So to say that it's lethargic or it's bad for my health, also is just an issue for me. I'm sorry. And I actually like to say thank you for actually enduring all this, because I know that especially with this subject in this town and this county, you guys got a lot of emotions to get through. But thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Parker. I've been a resident of Ridgecrest for two and a half years. Moved down here from Northern California, Meniscus County, part of the Emerald Triangle. Meniscus County, on the surface, is a beautiful place. There's a dirty secret, though. The time I was up there, some thirty years ago, stayed up there twenty years, I saw the drug culture, especially the marijuana subculture devastate the society up there. I don't want to see it happen down here. This is a lovely place. I strongly support the letter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jordan Jarvis again. I also am a medical marijuana patient. I have died twice from grand mal seizures, except for from the same horrible epilepsy that the gentleman earlier today suffers from. It does get better. I had my first seizure that killed me in October 2007, and the second one in December of 2007. I spent years going through the same struggle he did, trying to find medicines, and finally found cannabis, and here I am today because of it. I want to mention that regulation can provide control over who, what, when, where, and how cannabis is in this community. It gives you that control and that option, okay? It gives you the ability to put together conditional use permits, okay? To ensure that the people that get these conditional permits are very aware of the current laws that they have to follow, A for the community, B for the state, and that they're accountable to follow them all. And I'm sure our businesses here are happy to do that. They've been a very positive, positive note in our community for apparently the last seven years. And I have been going to them for over five, since I moved to Johannesburg. So they've been very helpful to me, too. If I wasn't able to go to them, I had to drive to Bakersfield to get pot. That's a long ways away. That is a very long ways away, especially when you don't have a driver's license because you're seizures, and you've got to get cannabis so you don't have more. That's some crap. And just to think about you removing the medical dispensary here turns my stomach because of people and how they would have to suffer. As the gentleman earlier stated, there are over 4,000 patients just in this community, okay? The people here in the audience, can I get a raise of hands who's here to support cannabis? Okay, great. When you protest, one protester is equal to ten people at home. When you show up to a council meeting, that's equal to twenty to twenty-five people at home. That's, that right there is how your community feels about cannabis. I want the council members to recognize that and identify that. That's a fact, sir. I'm sorry, but it is. There are huge additional benefits for the community. You can, as I stated earlier, help with school budgets. You can definitely help with the police department. Cannabis could afford to probably provide everything our local Ridgecrest Police Department needs, if you just taxed it. That's it. Fair tax on it. That's it. That's all you'd have to do. And that would probably afford this gentleman here, our captain, to be able to have everything he needs. That's also a truth. As the numbers stated earlier from the gentleman were 31 million, those were the conservative numbers in the EIR report. They went up to 52 million for the county, okay? I'm just wanting our community to wonder what that piece of pie of 52 million dollars a year can do for here. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of help for our police department. That's a lot of lives saved out in the outskirts of our county, okay? I care about all the murders, but I also care about all the 911 calls for ambulances and fires, okay? I have hundreds of old people in Johannesburg and Ransburg who do not have 911 response time, with the thank God exception of the Ransburg Fire Department. It can be hours and hours for an emergency murder phone call to have the police or sheriff show up. Hours. That is not okay, guys. That is really scary. To hear our sheriff, Youngblood, say he's not going to support the law whether our county decides in favor of this or not is also unacceptable. He's a voted official. He needs to follow the law that he was voted into a poll, okay? I live in the outskirts of our county. I want to know when I call 911, he's going to show up. That's very important, okay?
Your time is up now, sir.
Can I borrow someone's time?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
We know where you stand.
That's fine that you know where I stand. There's points that are important for the community and for you guys to know about that you're not aware of.
I've got one question. I've got one question. You've mentioned dispensaries here. I'm curious where they are. Are they in the county, San Diego County? Where are they located? I don't want to know the exact place.
There's some in and around the city of Ridgecrest, and there's some in and around the outskirts of our county. There's a place off 395 in Johannesburg. There's a place off the 178, right here. There's a number of different locations. But only here do we have an actual respectable amount. Anywhere else in our county, there's dozens of them. It's an overflow and a flood. But our residents here respect here, and we respect where we live, we respect our community. And so we're respectful about that. And I think the store owners or proprietors take that into mind, and I think that's a big part of why you don't have fifty of them here in town. I think what's here provides the need. I don't think it needs to grow immensely. I just think you guys need to regulate it and control it so you guys have that control, can reap the tax benefits, and help our community. That's all I think you guys really need to do. And it's not hard. I really agreed with Wallace's comments about it should be up to the community to vote. High five, man. That is exactly how that should be. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for that, because in Bakersfield, the community voted and it passed, because that's what the community needed, okay? In other cities, it doesn't pass because it's not needed. And I think leaving it up to the community, by far, I think that's the best thing I've heard all day. I think that's the way to go. And I thank you for that. I hope the rest of the council will take that into consideration and try to allow the citizens to vote on it.
I've got to cut you off now, because in all fairness, I cut the other guy off.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Sidney Bradley Ruth again. Hi. So in, trying not to repeat anybody, I'm going to go on a personal status. I should be dead right now, literally three times over, easy. Most people could say that, or some variant. I should have the mentality of a three-year-old. I should not be able to use the right side of my body at all. I should have a huge droop on my face right here. But I'm a very determined, inspired, and motivated person. Unfortunately, two or three times, I've turned to alcohol on a major scale, and it has really torn me down and set me back. And within the last ninety days, I got my medical card, stopped drinking. I'm a full-time student, once again, at Saratoga. I'm working full-time, but I'm labeled as part-time. I'm bettering my, the smaller community, which I live right here, literally right next to Jameson Row. I'm bringing up my family, my friends, everybody in or around me. And it doesn't necessarily have to be cannabis, but this is what's working for me. I cannot do pills because of my hormone regimen with being transgender. Medical cannabis is helping me significantly in achieving my dreams. And I know it's helping a lot of other people, too, so that's my part.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matthew Thorpe, and I'm a medical marijuana patient. I've been using marijuana for my whole life, and I just think that there's a lot of ridiculous, ridiculous things that everybody's overlooking. Methamphetamine in this community is like cancer. And the breaking and entering and thefts go on, like, you know, and that's not marijuana, you know? I just want to know what's being done with the breaking and entering that goes on every day.
You're asking me what goes on with it?
I mean, how are you going to stop it? I mean, methamphetamine and cocaine use in this community.
Legislation passed that now we write tickets for methamphetamine. They no longer get put into jail. So there's no punishment anymore, really.
There's no punishment? So breaking and entering and aggravated behavior?
You asked me about methamphetamine. Breaking and entering, of course, if we catch them, we...
I mean, because it seems like the focus around the community is over marijuana, and the real problem is like meth.
That would just be the focus today.
I mean, like, we're supposed to vote you people in when you don't do your job. I mean, how are you going to get your votes to get back in?
I'm not voted in.
You're not voted in?
The council's voted in, the police are not.
I mean, because I see it like failure big time in this community. And it's like, you guys let the bad drugs come in, you know, like murders, okay? Murders like are caused by psychotic drugs.
We don't have murders in Ridgecrest at a large amount. We haven't had one. We, that was not Ridgecrest.
The last three murders were in the county, they weren't in the city.
Okay, well, the county, the city, whatever, it's a problem, and it needs to be worked out, because it just seems like marijuana is not the issue.
You know where you need to go. You need to go to the Board of Supervisors is where you need to go. Or the Planning Commission, Kern County, on the 28th of September.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. I'll go there and I'll...
Hi, I'm Elena Walton. I'm a resident of Ridgecrest, California, and I've been born and raised here. I graduated borough...
Excuse me, can we please have it quiet in the audience so we can hear the person speaking?
I graduated boroughs this year with a 3.7 GPA, and I immediately followed that up with a Saratoga, and I went full-time there. And I'm also doing full-time right now, and I'm planning on working two jobs. The reason that I'm here is because I want to defend the medical marijuana. And my reasoning for that is, is because I have personally been diagnosed over five years with anorexia, and that is a really intense mental disorder. And not only that, but followed up with chronic depression and high social anxiety. So basically, what I'm here to say is that it is a medicine, and it is a form of a natural medicine. And I have been taking like many, many, many antidepressants, stuff to help my anxiety, just stuff to just get me through the day. And I've gotten up to about seven pills in one day. That's how severe my condition was. So I actually did not get treatment, proper treatment, from those antidepressants, ended up making my depression, my anxiety, and my disorder worse, and put me into a really bad spiral. And the reason I say that is because antidepressants, while they are a type of medicine, they are not, they're not for everyone, if that makes sense. And they can also have the reverse effects, as in making everything worse, you know, the suicidal thoughts, the, it's all too real, and a lot of people experience these just for simple things like depression. And it can really make this worse. And I have not been smoking cannabis for very long, but I do realize that in my smoking cannabis, that it has regulated my eating. I am now at a stable weight. It has helped me recover, it has put me in a more positive mindset, but it has not left me any less motivated. I am very motivated to reach my goal, wanting to be a dermatologist. I am dedicated to college and working two jobs and doing what I need to get my life together. I think the stereotype of people being lazy and unmotivated is just, it's unfair and it's ignorant. It affects people in many different ways. Some, yes, they become more lazy, but some, it just actually helps them heal. And that's what it did for me in this case. And I know a man who's like my second father. He's very close to me, and he broke his back. He was a construction worker. He broke his back falling off a roof onto a cinder block. Yep, and he is handicapped, and he cannot walk, and he's in constant pain. And as of recent, his opioids have been taken away. His only painkiller, they have put machines in his back just trying to help, but his main thing that helps him personally is cannabis. And I know that it affects a lot of people in a really positive way. And just on behalf of him, and on behalf of my, you know, beloved, and on behalf of a lot of other people, I just say that, please, just know the extent of which it has a positive impact. Because even though it just seems like it's a small thing for simple lives and that it can be a terrible thing, it's honestly a great thing. I just think that you need to look into medical research more. There's a lot of statements saying that cannabis can really help and heal people rather than hurting them, making them, you know, more lazy or just, you know, it can honestly really help people. And I think that that is something to be recognized. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sylvia, and I'm the manager at County Line Organics. We've been in the area for about seven years. Majority of our patients are over or under sixty years old, a lot are fifty years old. You guys got the impression of saying that we're teenagers. No, we hardly have any teenagers. We have the Ano Valley Hospital, City of Hope, that references patients to have. We have the Ridgecrest Hospital that references patients to us. We have a doctor in town that references patients to us. We are strictly medical, and we check everybody's paperwork. They all have to be in point. Everybody knows me, that we are strict as it can be, if we can have it. You can ask any of our patients. We don't, all our patients, I've seen improving, a lot of patients. We ask for result, test results from their doctors, what, in cancer patients, some of their cells have been gone down, the white cells have been gone down. So we have a lot of patients that need us here. You need to really look at your city, and don't take the medical away from them, because they cannot travel. We have people on Welschir coming to us. We have people that have healthcare givers coming to us. You need to, maybe you guys can go visit the facility and see where we're about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ridgecrest City Council. My name is Joseph Hunter, and I'm a Ridgecrest resident. I've been here for most of my life, except for some time spent in Fresno, going to school. Uh, I am a recreational marijuana user. I don't use it for medical purposes. That's kind of a, I don't know, maybe not something that people generally wanna share because, uh, it's been illegal for a while, but I've been smoking it for ten years. In that time, I got a bachelor's degree. In my bachelor's degree, I got a four-point-oh in my major while I was smoking marijuana. When I came back to Ridgecrest, I performed some, this, and this is anecdotal stuff. This is the stuff that I've done that kind of throws out some of this other anecdotal stuff that you wanna share and misinform people with. So, I'll just give you some other anecdotal things. Are you familiar with Shakespeare at all? What's he then that says, "I play the villain when this advice is free I give and honest"? You know that speech? That's, that's Iago's speech. Um, it's one of the longer ones in Othello. I memorized it and performed it onstage while I was high. There's a thousand lines of Shakespeare in that. Two-hundred more lines than Othello, the main character. So, I don't really think you can say that it's something that kills your memory. Uh, a point of logic that I'd like to point out, you said that you, Mr. Martin, Wallace Martin, uh, you said that you wouldn't want to get any revenue from some sort of vice, Well, then why do we sell and tax alcohol and cigarettes? Okay, so that's kind of a hypocritical statement. So, maybe we should just allow people to buy it and tax it and pay for things like safety and, and medical resources and maybe our roads and infrastructure in, uh, in our town. That'd be wonderful. I do understand that this is kind of a tough situation here in this town, particularly because it's a federally funded town. I think I remember an assessment hearing that, uh, one-third of the employees in this town are employed by the base. Maybe it's even higher than that, like, half with contractors and things like that. Um, and I understand that that really sucks for them, that they can't, you know, enjoy recreational or even medical marijuana and the benefits that can come from that. But there's another half of the workforce in Ridgecrest that does have a legal right to it now, that you're just gonna disregard as people who don't have a right or an, or an issue with this? I, that really boggles my mind, that we can just disregard half of the population of our town. You know, the federal versus state rights thing is, is really interesting. I understand federally it's an issue. But I also know that the federal minimum wage is lower than California minimum wage. Are you aware of that? So, maybe if we use the same logic, would, would everybody here agree that we should take the California minimum wage from ten dollars an hour to seven dollars an hour? May, maybe, maybe we should do that because federal law should trump state law.
As long as everybody else does.
Yeah.
Please, please, nothing from the audience while people are speaking.
So, I don't, these, these are just points of logic that wander through my mind as I, as I think about these, um, conversations that we have, and I hope that you have the same ones. I hope that you strongly consider allowing these things for our community. They're anecdotally wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. I think it's morally reprehensible to keep a medicine away from a person when it, when it really helps them get off of other worse drugs. Morally reprehensible.
Hi, my name is William Carroll. I'm a resident of Ridgecrest. Uh, I just completed a career, forty-four-year career, and I did it without ever smoking or using cannabis. I have visited my doctor several times and he has never recommended cannabis. One of the reasons is it's not recommended by the AMA. Why do we have an AMA? It's, uh, to rule out false drugs and stuff and to put forth to the public, uh, the use of drugs that do work. I think that our community, especially our law enforcement, cannot afford to have the additional problems of dealing with people that are high, driving down the road, or even in public. Um, you know, unless we have more tax revenue coming for that, I'm totally against it for that reason. If someone else had mentioned something about half the, basically half of Ridgecrest works for the base or, uh, is associated with it, they're not allowed to have, uh, the use of medical marijuana or even marijuana recreationally, I think that's a major consideration for this town. I also believe that, uh, if it's half and half, then fine, let's put it to a vote. Uh, but otherwise, let's not accept something that the whole community cannot, uh, accept. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Craig Stumpf, retired, been here for forty, forty-some years. Uh, one problem we have in Ridgecrest is we have a lot of drugs. And a lot of it's associated with marijuana. And I don't agree with recreational use of marijuana, uh, medical reasons. I really think it, they need, we need to listen to these people. But, right now, you got drugs throughout Ridgecrest and you have one group that regulates it. That's the police. And it's a pretty impossible job, I think, of, uh, doing something that breaks the back of that. All we do is see it grow. And my thought is, is if we have some more control of it, you're still gonna have illegal drugs in this town. But if you have, where somebody can go by and treat it reasonably, uh, sanely, then that's an alternative to arrest and punishment and, and all this. And I think that might be an extra, uh, way of helping to try and control the, the bad use of marijuana. 'Cause we all know that alcohol has bad sides too. But if you, if you made it illegal, then you had, it's dependent on you to regulate it. And when we could control it, I don't agree with alcohol either, but I use it too. So, so, I, I think it can be used to help the police department and, uh, control a problem that society has, that we, we have here. And we might wanna think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Council, Mike Neal. Before I comment, I need to make sure I'm clear on the ban, the law that the county is considering. As I understand it, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, please, I need, I need it to be clear, that they're, they're looking at either banning all recreational use and cultivation of marijuana or allowing recreational use and cultivation. And along with that, if they were to ban, ban that, then medical marijuana dispensaries would also be banned. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, I believe that's what they're looking at. There's other options available to them. I, I believe they're discussing.
Okay, so they are discussing some other options to that law?
Correct.
Okay.
Or proposals. It would be proposals.
Okay.
If the county's got three options, you choose.
Please, you're not on.
Well, okay, what I'm hearing, there's those two, what, those two I just stated.
Right, the other one is a, the other plan is a medical marijuana-regulated type facility.
Okay, okay, maybe, maybe, maybe I missed that. So, uh, and as we're all aware, historically, the county has allowed, you know, a specified number of medical marijuana dispensaries that the, the state, uh, the law that was passed, uh, allowed recreational use and cultivation with the, the condition that the cities and/or counties could do what they wanted on those issues, they could ban or they could allow and, and regulate. So, you know, that's, that's how it is. And a lot of what's been said here tonight, uh, in, in, you know, wanting you to support the overall recreational use and the cultivation part of that ordinance is because, from medical marijuana users. Now, I've changed my position on that over the years and I do think there's a place for medical marijuana dispensaries that are properly regulated. Uh, I get the sense that people that are here have been doing that, have been probably, likely doing the proper job, uh, you know, not using that as a, a door to improper use. And I think, uh, if the county has, has not made it clear that there's the option to allow medical marijuana dispensaries, that, that they've done us a disservice, uh, in that, in that respect, that, that we should tell them, this is my point of view, that, that, uh, we, we are against the recreational use and the cultivation of marijuana in Kern County, but we should continue with specified number, not just, you know, huge proliferation of properly regulated medical marijuana dispensaries. And that's, sounds like a reasonable thing that meets good need for, you know, what I've seen over the years, and I've had some personal experience, you know, with persons. Uh, one in my own family, uh, who actually got off of it because he had to ramp it up and ramp it up and ramp it up till he realized he couldn't even ramp it up anymore. It really wasn't helping him. But in other cases, there have been people who have got, you know, some good effect from that. And you do have to let people make their own choices to a reasonable degree, and these aren't like opiates. So, maybe we should include in the letter that we strongly urge the county to be sure that they include the option, or that they basically allow for the medical marijuana dispensaries that they've already historically allowed and ban it otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Gatlin Senior. Everybody's talked about the taxation and the money that we can make off of the marijuana. Sixty-seven percent of the budget for the police department is about, for the city is about sixty-seven percent, isn't it? Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Fifty-two million dollars divided by how many cities that they were saying on the environmental impact study? How many cities total in Kern County? The point I'm trying to make here, unless you're taxing this stuff at fifty percent, it ain't gonna happen. It's not gonna give you the money to do what you need to do. The money's not there. Most marijuana dispensaries run on a 501(c)(3). They charge five to ten dollars a gram, not ten to fifteen dollars a gram. Unless they wanna donate all their money to you, this is not gonna work that way. We have to come up with another way. I don't smoke marijuana, I don't drink. But God bless those who do, it works. I was wheelchair-bound three years ago, I've been bedridden for the last six years. I've had several back surgeries, I have, uh, spinal cord injury, basically. And if it works for them, that's great. But I don't want it around my twelve grandchildren. I've seen what it does to my children. The front, front cortex on a kid who's going through puberty does not mature. So, the critical thinking's gone. I've seen that personally. If you're gonna use medical marijuana by putting it in an RX bag, does not make it a medicine. If by people sitting up there and say, "Well, you take this, or take this, or take that", has the marijuana been tested for pesticides, organic phosphates? Has the marijuana has been tested for any mold or mildews? We need to make that safe for them. I do not want this to go through. We need to put more regulations on this to make sure that it is safe, that they can get the right prescription. But far as I know, there's no doctors actually giving a prescription for it. The amounts? No. How many milligrams a day are you supposed to take? How many milligrams?
It's federally illegal, they can't prescribe you the recommendation.
It's federally legal, so no doctor has ever prescribed the amount that you're supposed to take. So, you're self-medicating.
Sir, it's, you can't comment in the back because it doesn't get picked up.
That's my fault.
So, please, please don't ask the question of the audience.
That's my fault. The point is, I don't see a doctor sitting there prescribing this. Back in the olden days when you had Marinol, you had a physician prescribing it and being there. It was with a nurse and stuff. I don't think that we need to have a dispensary that is not fully regulated and under some type of resource that can inspect. Do not take their marijuana away. I'm not, I, I don't wanna advocate that. But we do need to regulate it. We do need to bring it up to professional level. We need to have people back there, you know, dispensing that actually know what they're talking about and say, "Hey, you know, I smoked pot for ten years." You know, I don't believe that's, you know, what, what gives them the ability to be able to tell you what's gonna work, what's not? Because what's worked for me is not marijuana. What works for them might be marijuana, but what type? They're gonna have to experiment with that. And that's the part that scares me. When I was a child, marijuana was three percent. I have no idea how high it's got with the GMO, with the cloning and stuff now. Yeah, and it's just gotten to a point that I truly believe that it's hallucinogenic. I truly believe that it's class one. And I don't think that we should just go nilly-willy and just say, "Cross the board". We need to give it to them, but we need to regulate it. We need to be able to, am I boring you, Mrs. Lindsey Stevens?
No.
Oh, okay, 'cause every time I hear somebody up here talking, you are looking that way. And I think it's really disrespectful. All right? So, the whole point is, is that, I'm done, thank you.
Well, thank you, point is you're done. Back at the beginning of this discussion, the mayor said we'd hold this to a maximum public comment of an hour, so we allow the three people in line, and then we're gonna have to cut it off.
Hey, uh, I'm really in line, I'm just sitting here.
Okay, okay, Dave, you'll be the last one. Now there's, now there's five of you in line, so please keep your comments as short as possible.
Hi, my name's Michelle Williams. Um, I've been a resident here since two thousand. As someone who has, um, used marijuana for several years and self-medicated with other things, I've been there on the meth end, I've used the opiates, you know, I've been there. And, you know, people who use meth, that shit makes you crazy. Excuse the language, but it does. It made me crazy. And I thank God that I was able to be strong enough to pull myself off of it. If I didn't have my marijuana, and I've been a cardholder for the last four years, the anxiety, the depression I have, the not being able to eat, um, yes, it is different now than years ago. The THC content's different, it's all, it, it's, it's a different, you know? Um, how am I trying to put it? It's just a little bit different now. So, it's a matter of finding what really works for you. And, um, if our shop got shut down, it would be really devastating. You know, I've been a loyal customer to them since I've had my card. And, um, yeah, I would be severely disappointed if, you know, this was taken away from all of us. And, um, you know, I just wanted to throw my two cents in on it and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike. I didn't come prepared for a speech for you guys, but I just wanna answer some questions. Wallace Martin, um, you were saying about people holding jobs, et cetera, et cetera, that use medical marijuana. Well, I'm gonna let you know, I helped start County Line Organics, Get Up and Get Rolling. I held my job and County Line, run the co-op for over four years, running a full-time job. Now I help run two co-ops. We got multiple licenses through Cal City. And everything's we're doing, we paid over a half-million dollars in seven years in sales taxes from County Line. Okay, so, we do our payroll taxes, we do everything legit. We check all our patients, we do everything for them. I don't have customers over there, we have patients there, sick patients that need us. And we are gonna stay here if I, takes me to my last daughter and lawyer fees to lawyer up against the county or you guys. We have, we, when we first opened up, your police department used to come and harass us, park, send their detectives to our shop, park all their cop cars in front of our shop. "Oh, yeah, we don't appreciate it. We have sick patients that need us." And we stayed here. And we're gonna continue staying here. here. Another thing is, I can't believe you guys don't see the people that really need us, that, that, from these illnesses that need us here. We're not, we don't let anybody in. You guys send your people already. I guarantee you guys, they have told us, your detectives come, you're sending, we check everything, every documentation. We got Dr. Rena from town sending us cancer patients that cannot drive, like Peggy Breeden that left, she cannot drive. We have cancer patients coming to us with caregivers that cannot drive to have to get their medicine for them. You guys gotta think about them, not just think about yourselves. They have an option on what, what to use. If they want to go with the CBD products that do not get too high to go through their cancer or their treatments, that should be their option. They shouldn't have to be forced in using opiums, oxycontin's, et cetera, et cetera. And I just wanted to let you guys know that. I wasn't gonna speak up today, but, oh, yeah, besides that, I do, I, right now, we got quite a few jobs, and I do run a full-time travel ball baseball team, practice three times a week, every weekend, we're gone with my kids. I do everything. We're just another person that believe and what we're doing is right, and we're gonna keep doing what we think is right.
Hello, my name is Jose Retana. I lived here in Ridge Chris for the last sixteen years, and I've been suffering from offshore degenerate, offshore arthritis. I have two discs in my neck that are completely dried, but the medication that I was taking for pain, people wasn't understanding what I was saying, because they said my words were slurring. I heard myself fine, but the pain medication was hurting my liver and my pancreas. Since I've been on this program for a year and a half, I had no problems with my liver. I am a recovered alcoholic, and that's been since nineteen ninety-two that I stopped. I'm sixty-nine, gonna be sixty-nine years old next, next year, just come in January. And I thank God that I found the proper medication that helps me with my pain, that helps me sleep at night. My wife has seen me get up time and time and time again, years passed, couldn't sleep. I, I weigh way too much. I weigh a hundred and eighty pounds now, and I'm proud of myself, because I don't have to use drugs for that. I use the medical marijuana because it works for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Jaime Sandoval, resident of Ridge Chris, California. How many people on the board in Council know me and out there know me? I'm a medical marijuana patient. I've had cancer the last four years, and the term of toking is no longer acceptable, because at this co-op, flower, as what they say, is a very, very small, small menu item. The rest are CBD products, products that people need, edibles. They have suppositories even. They have patches, CBD patches. They have a ratio of THC and CBD, and get it any way you want. There's, the long-term of psychoeffect is gone. This is a medical property, and it does help. I was going through chemo in a year and a half. I have my boss out here, he can tell you how skinny I was, how much weight I lost. And, I mean, many people out here know how fat I was before. I managed McDonald's here for many, many years and gained a lot, a lot of weight. I can tell you. But I lost a lot of weight going chemo last year. This lady Sylvia gave me a bottle of CBD oil that helped. Okay, I do smoke sometimes to get my, get my appetite back. This bottle of CBD oil, the cancer I have, I should have tumors forming in my body. I don't. I'm in remission the last six months now. I've had nothing, tumors show up, and the doctors are amazed. They are amazed, and I tell them, CBD drops, CBD drops, CBD. So, the term of having a person who's swung goalie, as you saw, in Ridge, in Ridge from out high, is gone. You know, the people that use this product, now, you heard the constituents out here, you're sitting up here and say, oh, yeah, they're from Joe Berg, they're out of county, they don't vote for us. They don't vote, but they spend money in our city. They work in our city. In the community, they spend, all, all their taxes are here. So, you gotta think about that. You gotta think about, of course, they don't vote for you, but they spend money in our community. They shop. They go to the doctors here. They buy gas. They shop at your hardware store. They do everything. Think about that. Now, the letter asks degradation to the quality of life in our city? You're bringing a casino here? Jesus! Come on! That group snowballed you so bad. People aren't gonna stop in Ridge Chris to go casino? Why? They're gonna, they're gonna go to State Line. People, they're gonna go to State Line, it's closer. They go to, they go to Bishop, because they can ski, they can do other things. They're not gonna come to Ridge Chris to gamble. They're not. They're not gonna stay here. What's gonna keep you there? No, not marijuana. Then again, about regulation of having a co-op in the county. If you look at city limits, where else can you have co-ops in the county line? Not very close. It's BLM land, it's city land, it's federal land. So, county area, having a co-op is very limited. Think about that. So, having the, saying yes to A will have you very limited. You don't have that, you're not gonna have co-ops everywhere in this area. You won't, because there's not available space for them. Think about that. That's all I have to say as a constituent, as your voter. I'm a patient, and I do need this drug. It's not a drug, it's a medical drug for me. It has saved my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Matthews, I've been in Ridge Chris about fifty years. I'm eighty-six years old, and I never smoked pot. I did have a glass of red wine now and then, and maybe a few other things, but I'm still kicking, and it's not due to pot. So, I'm sympathetic with all the stories I'm hearing tonight, and maybe there is something to it. However, I'm hearing that the AMA does not endorse it, so the doctors can't write prescriptions, so where are we getting all these medical prescriptions from? My wife, God bless her soul, she had MS for thirty-some years. She was in pain, she couldn't walk, she ended up, she couldn't drive. We had to get a medical bed for her eventually, and she ended up, a couple of years ago, dying, not just, not from the MS, but because she fell on the floor, because she fell asleep in her wheelchair, and she had a blood clot and a fracture and a few other things. So, there's other problems that can be addressed as well as just getting something which has never been going through, or never gone through a, a blind study, as far as I know. And that is usually the way most medications come about. Mr. Martin, I applaud you for all the stuff that you read there earlier in the beginning of this discussion. I support some of it, because you mentioned, and by the way, the recreational law allows the use on over twenty-one. I don't know if that's by design or not, or whether you just picked that as a legal age, but I can attest firsthand that marijuana use during puberty, the teenage years, impedes their development. I have firsthand knowledge of that through, through several cases that I know. So, how are you gonna keep it out of their hands if it's in the community widespread? You can't. They get drugs now, they're gonna get this also. I hate to be in you guys' shoes, because I think my first impression this evening was that I suggest a complete ban. However, you know, I've seen what's happened in other states, so it's not gonna be banned. It'll, it'll get around somewhere on the black market or whatever. But I also have in-law, yeah, in-laws, not outlaws, in Colorado, and when their recreational marijuana went through, a couple of years later, I called or talked to some of them and asked them how it was going. And they said, oh, well, everybody drives slower now, and we have more accidents. Is that what we want here? It's been proven, and, and, and a lot of people have forgotten, probably, that when California passed their prop, some of the insurance companies raised their rates, because they know what happens. You cannot check for a blood test or overdose or anything on marijuana. You can for alcohol, and so, it's gonna be hard to regulate whether or not a person is really under the influence. And, oh, by the way, I didn't, I don't think I ever knew really what marijuana smelled like, but I think I can smell it tonight.
Ronald Porter, my problem I have tonight is, we're talking about, there's too much being said about medical marijuana. The issue today before the council was recreational marijuana, and if they, we want to discuss the other one, I have no problem, but, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna, council comment. We've already heard from you.
No, I want to thank everybody for talking and for coming up here. Okay? And, and I heard everything everyone, but he said, and I believe everything everybody said. I have issues in, in my own extended family, with people who have gotten, been prescribed heavy-duty medications for what started out to be a seemingly minor injury, and the prescription medications ended up doing five times the damage that the hospitalization did for the break in the arm. In fact, horrendously so. So, I get it, and I understand it. I'm not against anybody with a medical condition funding relief wherever they can find relief. And if it's less expensive and effective, then I'm in favor of that. My cautionary note had nothing to do with that. It had to do with the horrendous problems of regulating this. If it can be regulated, regulated strictly, strictly, as I said, and enforced, and enforced, underline, underline, so that people can get help when they need it in an incredibly controlled fashion. We've just never been able to do it since Nixon, ever, and so, it really, really, underlined concerns me. But I appreciate every story and everything, and I agree with all of you, and I thank you for your time. Okay?
All right. I just wanted to, I too appreciated hearing from everybody, and sorry to the gentleman who thought I wasn't paying attention. When people talk, I like to survey head nods and reactions throughout the room, and I also like to write things down. So, some thoughts came to mind. Mr. Thomas and I meet with the Action Committee, and we meet biannually, and at the last Action Committee, we kind of got a summary, basically, from the Community Resource Officers. Those are the police officers stationed at the schools. And it was really alarming to me to hear what is happening on our campuses because of some of these products that are now available. I understand that they are very good medically, but they are getting into the hands of our children, the things that look like peach rings. There's these products called weedos that look like Cheetos, and it's making it very easy for them to take it on the campus and to pass it around and distribute it, and it's very hard for our resource officers to try and control that. So, that concerns me, because I understand it works great medically. I also had a friend who she used it medically, and I was hearing of her son didn't realize that that pretzels had the product in it and ate the whole box and was paralyzed for a short period of time, because he obviously ate too much. So, those kinds of things really concern me, and I also do hear the concerns about people having to travel long distances, not being able to drive because you have epilepsy. Would like to share with you, we do have buses that go to Bakersfield, round trip to and from here, which I know is not the most convenient thing, but I just wanted to inform you that that is out there. The other thing is that many of the ones that were around here, even right after it passed, we had a number of them start up illegally, even within the city. They did not get business licenses. Some of the ones that were in the county even had been shut down, because they weren't following all of the regulations. So, even though the regulations are there, they're not always following them. So, that's other, something else just to be cognizant of. So, I just wanted to share those thoughts that had come into my mind as I was listening to everyone share. So, thank you.
Eddie, you have any comments?
Not to continue to repeat what we've heard from council, I, I am sympathetic to the people that have come up and the conditions, medical conditions that you have shared, but I also have a unique position of dealing with some of the young people that experience some of the addictions that, that have come. And I know some of you may not agree, but a lot of them have stated that, that was the entryway for some of them to get involved into some of this substance that led them to other things. And I know some of you would disagree with that, but I have, as Mr. Wallace says, I have a personal experience with it, even in the ranks of my own, with my own father. So, it's, it's not a tax thing or a money thing with me. I think it's more of a, of a protective thing, that I, I feel that I need to make sure the best that I can for those younger people that are coming up, that will have hard enough time trying to survive through life. So, I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned about it in reference to our officers that have to deal with it on a day-to-day basis. And I know that some of you have resources, and you have already stated that you would probably sue the county and the city and whoever else, and I know you must do what you need to do to protect your investment and the people that you feel are getting help, and that's what you're supposed to do. But I feel that it's my position to protect those others, and I'm gonna do what I need to do to protect them as well. So, I, that's really where I stand at with it. So, Mr. Mauer.
Yes. Well, being the only one sitting up here that voted for the casino, if I vote for marijuana, I might as well leave town. I'm sorry. And I, and I disagree with the one comment that, for everyone that, that is here in favor of it, there's ten out there that aren't. Let me, let me give you the example we learned in the casino. When the casino issue first hit the council, that most of the audience we're here was against it. And then, the next meeting, we had a group that they formed twenty-five, twenty-six-hundred people together in favor of it. So, and I'm sure if we postponed this till next meeting, we would have a lot of church people down here trying to outnumber you guys. So, I'm afraid I, I cannot vote in favor of marijuana, and I don't have the problem the next election until June. I don't, I don't know if you want to wait that long, but I would have no problem letting it be on the ballot. But I will say that not only are the base people not allowed to smoke marijuana, but there are- there are many businesses in town that are zero-tolerance drug employers. And if you smoke marijuana or use marijuana, it stays in your system a lot longer than alcohol, and you fail the drug test. I have that from personal experience, not me using it. But potential employees that I really wanted to hire, but I couldn't because they failed a drug test. So what's the...
I make a motion that we send the letter saying that we would like to go with option A.
I second the motion.
Should we have a motion in a second?
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Stevens.
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
They can't vote until June. Yeah, that costs us over $50,000 to put on a special election. Wanna call this meeting back to order? We still have a few items on the agenda, and one councilman said we'd probably be out by 8:45. I don't think we're gonna make it in six minutes. So, discussion resolutions before the League of California Cities, Mr. Wallace. Did I read this right? There's two of them?
Yeah, there's two of them, right. All right, so in the sense of being a little brevity, breveticious, how's that? Brevity, go ahead. Yeah, brevity, is that a good one? Brevity, yeah. So here's the deal. I'm gonna skip some of this unless someone wants me to go into the details on it. I do wanna hit a few of the highlights, though, to educate the general public on a couple of bills that you hear us talking about, you know, that have come down, but there's a few specifics in here that I'd like you to kinda know for future discussions. All right, every year, the annual conference for the League of Cities addresses hot topics that impact cities across the state. During the past several years, the state legislative changes have fundamentally altered the fabric of California's criminal justice system, all with the goal of simply reducing our prison population. So here's some of the changes in the existing laws that have now proven to increase crime and danger the health and safety of police officers, residents, business, and property owners. Here we go. Here's the problem that these bills have done. First, crime rates skyrocketing. AB 109 transferred nearly 45,000 felons from the state prison to local jails. They were not equipped to handle this, period. As a result, lower criminals, lower-level criminals were released early, and many probationers with severe mental illness, they were released. There we go. Proposition 47. The so-called Safe Neighborhood and School Act was heavily lobbied and approved by voters in 2013, reclassified and downgraded a number of serious crimes from felony to misdemeanors, get ready for this, including drug possession, repeated shoplifting, forging checks, gun theft, possession of date rape drugs. The, reducing felonies to misdemeanors. The logic behind this, making these heinous and dangerous crimes simply misdemeanors, in my opinion, should be considered a crime in itself. This is horribly damaging to our communities. Proposition 57, heavily lobbied and approved by voters in 2016, allow criminals, listen to this one, who commit multiple crimes against multiple victims to be eligible for release in the same time as offenders who only committed a single crime against a single victim. So in short, the extreme, very serious offenders get a get-out-of-jail-early pass as if likely they were first-time offenders. It's nuts, preposterous. Right away, right after they passed this, more than 30,000 criminals convicted of quote-quote "nonviolent." Yeah, okay, felonies were set free. Some of them were guilty of rape, deadly assault, drive-by shootings, human trafficking with minors, but these were nonviolent. In short, the Public Policy Institute of California reports what has happened since these laws were passed. I'm shorting this down from about 30 pages. It's not a pretty picture. I tell that for Mike. Horrible bills and propositions have horrible consequences. Imagine that. California has experienced an uptick in overall crime. Property crimes up 145 percent, violent crime up 54. One in four now view violence and street crime as a very serious problem. Arrests have dropped 31 percent for property crimes, 68 percent drug offenses due to Prop. 47, auto theft increases are through the roof due to AB 109. And during the past two years, officers have been shot, wounded, and killed in communities throughout California. Nationally, the number of U.S. officers killed in the line of duty hit a five-year high in 2016, and the National Law Enforcement Group states that national fatalities for officers who died in line of duty were up 10 percent. All right, to mitigate these horrific, damaging bills that are hurting cities throughout California, the League of Cities proposed the first resolution. It reads as follows: "A resolution of the League of California Cities calling upon the governor and legislature to enter into discussion with the League and other public safety stockholders to identify and implement strategies that will reduce the unintended negative impacts of these existing laws." There are seven things. I'm not gonna read them unless I finish. Someone wants to hear them exactly. But they're implementing seven provisions to help mitigate the disaster that these propositions have, and bills have created. Number two, resolution number two. It reads as follows: "A resolution by the League of California Cities supporting legislation amending Government Code 38611 to clarify the definition of local control, providing broad statutory authority for local officials to determine emergency service levels and direct those medical responses with their jurisdictions." I'm gonna simplify that by saying this. It was last amended in 1957, so you can imagine it needs a little overhaul. And it does not contain language clarifying the broad scope of emergency services that are provided by present-day fire departments. So, the League of Cities staff shows that significantly support, no opposition to date for these items, these two resolutions, and there's no known fiscal impact on cities related to this last resolution. So in conclusion, I see, Mike, I shortened it up. "As the voting delegate for Ridgcrest, I strongly believe that our city should join many other cities in approving both of these resolutions put forth by the League of Cities." Done.
I second it.
You know, I've had personal experience with the negative results of what has gone on the last few years, because police officers catch people stealing from me red-handed,
and they can't do anything.
And they get turned off. The district attorney turns them loose. So our state has just gone crazy in allowing a crime to be rampant in this state with no consequences. The state and the county district attorney have sent a message out to criminals in this valley that as long as they keep it, what, under $1,000? Is that what it is, Ron? $9.50. They can come to my store six times a day and take $900. Unless I beat them over the head with a baseball bat, they get away with it. And of course, then Ron rests me. So anyway, so did you make a motion?
No, he didn't, yes.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to comment?
I just know, too, from doing my ride-along, watching them give like a tweak or a ticket, you could tell it's not really very effective.
No, it's not.
Hey, Matthews, yeah. Whatever happened to the three-strikes law? I thought that was a proposition, wasn't it? Sounds like one of the things you mentioned is throwing that out.
Well, the problem is, is they've taken so many things and made them, downgraded them that they don't end up with three strikes.
Just a comment, if you haven't heard already. Somebody down at Walmart yesterday, late evening, I guess, had a big skateboard, come running out the door with three TVs, flat-screen TVs, jumped in his truck. Somebody got his license finally, and the cops got him in 15 minutes, but I don't know what happened to him after that.
Three TVs has to be a felony, right?
I guess, I don't know how much they were worth, but I know somebody that saw it all happen.
Good, okay. Any other public comment? Okay, any more council comment or entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we support our delegate approving both resolutions.
I have a second.
Mr. Mauer.
I haven't said, you got a second?
Oh, I thought you said you seconded it, sorry.
Okay, I'll say, I asked if we had a second, but I will second it since the other two are too bashful, too.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas. Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Stevens.
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, next item is ordinance number 12, introduction and first reading of the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ridgcrest, amending the Municipal Code Section 4-1.1313 as it relates to abandoned vehicles. Acting chief.
Sir, this ordinance corrects some confusion. Within the municipal code existed a 10-day parking which contradicted the California Vehicle Code and another ordinance that we had, so we would like to strike the 10-day ordinance and remove it from the municipal code.
Any comments?
Why are we dealing with this? Wasn't this, didn't this go through a committee?
It went through City Org, yes, sir.
But we have to vote on it.
It has to be passed by council.
What was their finding? Let me finish.
There was confusion. It was contradicting the newer laws, and it looked like it was, after reading through staff reports previous, that it should have been removed, however it wasn't. So now we're just correcting that error and removing it.
Okay. So they recommended to move it, to remove it? That was their recommendation?
I don't believe they gave any recommendation. That was staff's recommendation, I guess. But we did discuss it at State Org, and however, and it came out of there. It was confusing, and it needed to be removed.
In 2006 or 2007, the police department came to City Council to amend the ordinance. It currently was 10-day, and we had to move it to a three-day removal to match the vehicle code to be able to tow vehicles, because without it, with only the 10-day, we couldn't. So it appears from looking at the staff report from back in 2006 that there was an intention to remove it. It just was never removed. So we're just going in and cleaning this up so we do not have two conflicting ordinances, one saying that you can't have it for three days, and the other saying you can't have it for 10 days. This just allows us to clean up our municipal code. That's all we're doing.
Does this help make so that people can't, say, use right-of-way for parking their vehicles for commercial use and things like that?
No, that would all fit under the current laws, anyway. The 10-day really had no teeth. It didn't allow you to remove items like abandoned vehicles and dilapidated vehicles on the roadways.
So... Can we eliminate the agency and boards, too?
No. Okay, so I guess we'd ask for public comment first, though.
Any public comment on this item?
Mike Neal again. I missed what, in my reading of it, what Ms. Sharlin just pointed out. I think possibly that would go under improper noticing and might need to throw this out till the next meeting. I'm not totally sure about that one. However, let me speak to the ordinance itself, and I brought this up, actually, and this was actually part of my platform. I spoke on this specifically when I ran for mayor. I felt that this 72 hours was unfair to the citizens. In addition to that, just let me read brief little snippets from the actual California law, which is Code 22651. Says a peace officer, dot-dot-dot, may remove a vehicle located within the territorial limits in which the officer or employee may act under the following circumstances. And then you have all your paragraphs conditioning that. Paragraph K says, and you need to pay attention to the language here, "When a vehicle is parked or left standing upon a highway for 72 or more consecutive hours in violation of a local ordinance authorizing removal." Now, there would have been two ways to state that, depending on what you intended. It could have said, "Is parked or left standing upon a highway for more than 72 hours," but it said 72 hours or more. Well, the or is a conjunctive, which means either, and this is from thelaw.com definitions that it is often vital to distinguish between or and and, and some of us are familiar with this. If you got a title on a vehicle that says "Mary or Bill Davidson," means that either one can transfer the car. Now, in my reading of this, I take this to mean that the local agency can enact their own ordinance of not allowing the parking or standing of the vehicle on the public highway for 72 hours or more than 72 hours. And this was our point about this whole thing, is I know many people who have got, you know, hit with this. I just heard some griping from some friends the other day. Somehow this came up. I don't think it was a different ordinance, but it had to do with parking a motorhome on the street. In this particular case, how many people you think have had visitors come, and they come and they drive in from out of town or out of state, and they come for a while, and they don't wanna block your driveway, so they park in the street? So if they're there for a week, they're liable for, to get their car actually removed, according to this article, whereas if you gave people a little more reasonable amount of time to park their cars, then you wouldn't, obviously, in some cases, you'd still have the problem. But, you know, the intent, I think, of a law like this is to keep people from saying, "I don't need this car. Dump it out on the street. Leave it out there for two months, three months, six months, whatever." And you can expect people around the neighborhood to want that to happen, and that would be unreasonable, but three days? I mean, I know people personally who needed to park their car on the street, and I've had to go to them and tell them, go through this little ridiculous procedure of move your car a little bit every few days, because otherwise, code enforcement's gonna come over here and he's gonna threaten to remove your car. Well, you know, they shouldn't have to go through all that, and it's because of the three days. Now, what's being proposed here, of course, is to remove the older ordinance, which gave you 10 days, and the only reason it didn't have any teeth was it simply said you can't leave it standing there. It didn't say we're gonna remove it. Otherwise, they could have just left it in place. And falling back on saying that the state law says it has to be 72 hours, not more than 72 hours, I don't think is proper use of the language, and I think you have the leeway to go beyond that. And my original suggestion to City Org was that we make it, and lo and behold, older city councils thought 10 days was reasonable. And I wasn't even aware of that. The former city manager brought that up and brought to light that you have two laws contradicting each other. So obviously, you can't make the modification right now, but I would request that you put it up for consideration, that you modify ordinance 0501, and you increase time span, allowing your citizens to have a little more reasonable freedom to park their cars upon the streets that they pay for. Thank you.
Can we legally do that? What are our legal obligations as far as following the state or not? What's the...
Well, I haven't researched that specific issue, but I think Mr. Neal's legal conclusions sound reasonable. That it, I mean, it sounds like from what you've read that we have to pass an ordinance to have that take effect in the first place. We could opt not to have the ordinance, for example. Seems reasonable to me that you could have an ordinance that has a longer time period than 72 hours. But again, I haven't researched that.
I'm expecting him to oppose me on that, by the way.
We gotta mark this in our calendar.
But, so if we could bring it up for consideration at another council meeting, and then, you know, whatever legal opinion we get on that, and maybe I'll try to bolster my opinion about it in the meantime or whatever, and just... about it in the meantime or whatever, and, and just, you know, on the top of your head, it's just, for being reasonable, for being fair to the people of Richcrest, I don't think three days is fair. And I think we have a way to make it.
From my understanding, Mr. Neal, we haven't had any complaints regarding the three-day ordinance and from my understanding, it has to be a three-day ordinance for us to be able to tow the vehicles. Now, we can, we can verify that. That was the reason why we had gone from the ten days to the three days because we had the inability to tow the vehicles off the roadway. That's why we went that direction in the first place. For just the ten days, all we were able to do was write an administrative citation.
Right.
And that was the issue. To my knowledge, I've not had a flood of people coming, like we mentioned during Community Org, we have not had a flood of people complain about the three-day tow. Normally, we use that for abandoned vehicles, for vehicles that are problematic in the neighborhood that citizens are complaining about. It's not something that we just drive around the block and we tag a wheel and then we wait three days to tow it. Majority of the time, these are tools that we use to solve community and neighborhood issues.
Well, for example, I've seen vehicles sit so long, they start getting black widow webs all underneath them and, and it mentions abandoned. I mean, if I parked my, my car out, out on the street in front of my house for a week, is it considered abandoned?
According to this law.
Well, normally, when we, when we enforce this law, it's usually normally a complaint from a citizen.
Complaint from a neighbor, right?
From a neighbor that wants us. We do not go out and proactively just tag vehicles willy-nilly. And so that's, that's the issue, is this is a, this is a tool that we use to solve community problems. You take the tool away, now we're going to have people concerned that we're not solving their community problems. What Mr. Neal's bringing up is, is an issue that we do not have a community complaining about the seventy-two-hour tow.
Well, I, I would, I would dispute the fact that we don't have a tool.
I don't know of any complaints. If you can bring them to me, of people that can complain about being harassed for the seventy-two hours, we will more than welcome.
To be honest, I don't think that's necessary, Mr. City Manager. I think what's necessary is for our representatives to do what's fair and reasonable for the citizens. I don't, I wouldn't, if I was sitting up there, I would not require one single complaint from a citizens. I brought this up because I was aware of it and I thought, three days? You, you got, really, you have to be kidding me. Three days, three whole days. I can't, I can't have a visitor for a week. And I can guarantee you that your code enforcement officer looks for those things because I see him, I'm not even looking for him, but I see him on a regular basis and he is just simply driving the streets up and down and all around. I thought about following, but then I thought I'd, I'd be nailed for, you know, stalking a police officer or something. And, and he's looking, he's looking, driving slow and he's trying to find stuff that he can cite people for. And I know for a fact that he cites at least two every month in this town.
I will say personally, prior to knowing that we weren't allowed to park on the road because I have a roofing crew and a landscaping company that park all of their vehicles on my residential street. We have a pop-up trailer and we had parked it in front of our house and I heard something and looked outside and he was writing a ticket for my pop-up trailer. So I had to run out and be like, no, no, no.
Trails and motorhomes are different.
Yeah.
Those are under something else.
But, so I do know that, I don't think anyone in my neighborhood actually turned me in. I think he prob, and I live in a cul-de-sac, so I think he probably did just drive around and he said he'd noticed the cobwebs and that's why he was writing it, but...
Well, I know for a fact that Mr. Matthews got called on a code violation and he had a car parked by his garage on the street for a very long time. Not a single neighbor called to complain. Guess he noticed code enforcement driving the street. So he is working, trying to find these things and, you know, there is some, some, some logic to saying you need to justify your job, so, or you just, you know, I'm trying to do my job. So obviously, they think that's their job and I don't think we need to make it their job to give people tickets or tow cars after only three days being parked on the street. It's that simple. Thank you.
Well, I thank God he doesn't do it in three days because I've got a car that's broke.
What? Oh.
Whoa.
Call the code enforcement officer.
It's been sitting there for three or four weeks and thank you for not looking at the spider webs.
We not got calls.
The bird droppings and everything else that gives a clean evidence that it is not working.
Well, get out there and wipe the cobwebs out.
So, and I, I know for a fact that I've called the police to investigate a vehicle that was parked where there shouldn't have been. Instead of them towing it, they went the extra mile and looked up the license plate, found an individual and called them and asked them to move the vehicle. So I don't, I don't think they just deliberately go around trying to give tickets. I think they work with it.
Stan, talk.
Stan Ratura, I was involved in two or three of the conversations at the City Org meeting. The way I interpreted the California law is that the California law actually was prohibiting cities from hauling off a car if there wasn't a minimum of three days or seventy-two hours. And, and that you had to have a law saying that you could haul the car away, but you can't have a law that you can tow the car away that is less than seventy-two hours. And that's why it's saying seventy-two hours or more. So I think the interpretation by Mr. Neal is absolutely correct. Any law that the city wants to impose that says you can tow a car at four days, five days, six days, or seven days is probably legal. And I don't want to get into a sketch of how many people have complained about it. I don't think that's really the issue. But I, but I believe that our acting city manager said that in order to be consistent with the California code, it has to be seventy-two hours. And I totally disagree with that interpretation of the California law. I don't think you need to be a lawyer to say that, that the, that seventy-two hours or more could be seventy-two hours or more. I mean, it's whatever we want to put in our ordinance and, and I don't think that having it extended to five days or six days or seven days is going to cause a problem to anybody. Thank you.
Yeah. You have a comment?
I, I, if you call a tow truck guy, you're lucky to get him out there in three days or four days or five days. And if you've got a big dang truck, you gotta get a big tow truck, you gotta call one of the commercial folks and, I mean, I think it kind of puts people in a real jam to, to deal with that in three days. In the, in LA or wherever, you kind of expect that, understand it, you know? I came to LA in nineteen eighty-two and I went in to get some copies done and I was in for two minutes, a hundred and twenty seconds. I came out, my caller's gone. Cost me two-hundred-and-thirty dollars back then to get it out. So I, in the city, we expect these things, but we're out here in the Mojave Desert, I think we cut people a little slack and I think ten days is perfect, I think that's perfectly reasonable. You can identify it and see it, call somebody, get a brother law to come help you chain that thing out of there. So I...
A lot, a lot of cities have a designated time when they, when they street sweep and so you're not allowed to park during those times.
Right, right, right.
I'm not, I'm not sure I'd go, I, I guess my, my recommendation is we postpone this till the next meeting and let the city attorney give us a ruling on that and then make sure we correct the staff report to what it's supposed to say and...
Do you want us to bring, let's assume for the sake of argument that, as I suspect that, that's, Mr. Neal is correct and that you can set it anytime longer than three days. Do you want us to come back with a blank there or what's your guidance on what you want this thing to look like?
I, I think, I agree that three's a little short, but I think ten's a little long.
So you want to do a week?
Yeah, seven days. That's just my personal opinion.
Is there something that shows, tells us a time limit?
Yeah, yeah. Let's, let's research that to make sure whatever we do is legal and conform.
We don't want, we don't want to get rid of our...
No, I understand that if it turns out that, I will be surprised, but if it turns out that you're required to have it seventy-two hours and that's the only time, number of days you can have it, then we'll come back and report that. But assuming for the sake of argument that that isn't correct, that seventy-two hours is a minimum, I'm just wondering what you want it, do you want it to be...
He's looking for what we want to see. Do we want to see if we get to choose?
Because we've got to give notice, we've got to give notice on the ordinance.
Three, seven, or ten, basically.
Right, so if it's okay and we can tow it and, and then we just give you direction now, we don't need to come back?
No.
No, no, you're going to have to, you're going to come back with an ordinance. We've got to give the notice.
It has to have a number of, yeah.
Yeah, we have to give the public notice of the ordinance. So I need to have a number.
See, I, I guess I got different visitors. When my family comes to visits, most of them that come visit me are coffee drinkers. We don't have coffee in our house, so their car never sits there for three or four days. They are, every morning they drive and get coffee and then come back. So I've never had a, I've never had a guest at my house where the car sat out front for three days.
Well, this is a good way to get rid of it.
What's, what's wrong with coffee? So, I, I'm okay, I think seven sounds reasonable. I don't know what...
Yeah, that's, that's, seven sounds good to me.
If seven, if, if we're allowed to pick more than thirty, I, I think seventy-two hours is a little short because I do know...
Yeah, I, I just, I was not trying to pin it down to a day. I thought he was going to give us a minimum or a maximum time that he can sit there.
No, you, the, the problem is I need to come back with an ordinance that we're giving notice to the public, what that timeframe is. So I, if I'm going to come back with something at the next meeting, I need direction on what you guys would want.
Well, if you're, as far as I'm concerned, if your interpretation is the California law says seventy-two hours, then I want you to come back with seventy-two hours.
Right, I got that.
If your interpretation could be longer than that, then I'd propose you come back with seven days.
Okay.
So either three days or seven days.
I don't need a formal vote, I just need consensus.
Yeah, consensus.
Okay. So then what, assuming we can do it, just for clarity, the, the new ordinance will not only have the section that strikes out four point one thirteen thirteen, but in addition, it would amend four dash eight point one oh-two point one, the section that says for more than seventy-two consecutive hours, I would strike that, assuming we can.
And then make sure they...
More than seven consecutive days.
And make sure the motions are changed to respect to abandoned vehicles rather than agencies, commissions, boards, and committees. We don't want to wipe them all out. Well, actually Wallace does.
I think that was in the staff report, but not in the ordinance.
Yes, the staff report, but not the ordinance, so...
Yeah.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong just for future, but that was just a recommended action, so really that wouldn't stop this from being passed, right?
Exactly, yeah.
But you still move forward, it's no violation.
Because that's not in the actual ordinance, that's just on the staff report.
You're talking about the errors with the staff report?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, so that, the question there is, did the public have adequate notice of what was being discussed? The ordinance, you know, is the, is the key piece of doc, I think, I think that it was probably, it probably was not so misleading or confusing as to keep people from understanding what we were talking about.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting, then.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next item is committee reports. City Org, we haven't met yet, that's next Tuesday, week from, week from yesterday, next Tuesday. Okay? Finance, we haven't met yet, it's third Monday.
Nope.
And it's canceled. ED Committee.
And we did meet?
Did we meet?
But I think we talked about it, yeah, we would have talked about it at the last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Infrastructure, we did meet. One of the people that were there said it was a wasted meeting. Sorry about that. We didn't take any action, but we had four items on the discussion. One was funding from Kern Cog, is the city getting its fair share? The answer to that was, is we are getting our fair share of some of Kern Cog's money, but some of Kern Cog's money we're not because we don't meet the requirements. Does that sum it up? They have some strict requirements which we don't meet. Update on the wastewater treatment facility, I think we're going to be bringing that up to council for a decision soon on the location. Is that correct, Lauren?
Yes, we will be providing an update to the wastewater ad hoc committee regarding where we need to go. There have been some issues that have come forward, so we need to advise the committee where, where we're going and the reason why.
Okay. Then we talked about the sewer rehabilitation project phase two, which is getting underway and that's a more broad, well, it covers more, more of the city than the phase one did. Phase one was pretty much located just right down through here. So that's, that's getting started now, Lauren, is that correct? Phase two?
Yes, we're entertaining a proposal right now.
Okay. And then the fourth one was Senate Bill One, Road Repair and Accountability Act. I think I reported last meeting from Kern Cog about how much money we were thinking we were getting, but now staff is saying that there are some strings attached to that money and requirements attached to that money, so we're not sure exactly where we stand. I think personally, well, I shouldn't say how I feel, I think personally the law was written so they could divert this money somewhere else. That's personal opinion. That's infrastructure. Next is Parks, Recreation, and Quality of Life.
We did not meet this month, but we do have, Upjohn Park is currently under construction and should be completed sometime next week and Pearson will be starting shortly after that and then following that will be the Freedom Park.
Now, one of the people that spoke in public comment today was talking about the splash pad and not having it where it, where it's been proposed, but having it over, and I've had other people tell me that, too. What is the status of the splash pad? Have we started construction yet or?
It's too late.
Too late to move it?
Well, I shouldn't say that, it would probably cost quite a bit of money since it's, I'm going to be up in a minute to speak about that.
Yeah, or I was going to say, comment on that during council comment.
Oh, okay, okay, fine.
But, yeah.
I was, I was just curious since belatedly, I mean, we've already let the contract, so it's kind of late to come and say we should move it, but anyway.
Right.
Okay.
It will not affect the flags, though.
It will not affect the flags. I, I didn't think it would, but anyway, is that your report, then? Are you done?
Um, for parks and, yeah.
Youth Advisory Council, you haven't met, have you?
We meet on the thirteenth, sir, of this month. And with that, we have, I guess we'll talk about it a little later, too, huh? Acting Chief.
Okay. Action Committee meets, what day? This month?
Have we scheduled it yet?
Doesn't, doesn't say what day of the month.
I don't think we've scheduled it first of the, or, yeah.
Okay.
The Action Committee?
The RACVB, we got a written report on that. Did you want to comment on it?
Yeah, I'll go through it real quick, not all of it. The RA, we met, they met with the chambers, working on a welcome to Richcrest Directory, which will include restaurants, local art, hotels, motels, museums, et cetera. The RACVB announced that it now has four billboards promoting Richcrest Three on Highway three ninety-five and RACB newest billboard is on Highway fourteen in Mojave. Let's see, the, this was a good one, too. The COLA, which is the California on Location Awards, will be held on December seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, with the Film Liaison in California statewide, which stands for F-L-I-C-S Film Commission. Only twelve of the F-L-I-C-S Film offices submitted nominations and Richcrest Film Commission submitted sixteen nominees alone. The other thing, as far as the filming is concerned, for the month of July two thousand seventeen, there was one production for Richcrest Film Commission at Enyu Kern Airport. There were zero productions for the month of July for filming and the total community, community spending for July two thousand seventeen was seven thousand three hundred nine dollars. The last thing I want to make mention of in reference to that, we were, we were shown or told that the new increase had, went into effect in reference to the hotels charging with the taxes and they noticed a twenty percent increase in heads in the bed, which means more taxes for the great city of Richcrest. So even though the prices are up, people are still looking to stay at Richcrest. So should drive us to a point where we could possibly get maybe even another hotel here, people that go out and do recruiting. And we had the privilege of having our community and economic development manager that attended the meeting and introduced herself, Ms. Penn.
Okay. Thank you. EDC?
The Economic Development Committee. We are, we're scheduled for next Wednesday, but we will not be having a meeting as Wallace and I will be venturing to Sacramento.
Okay. Other committees, boards, and commissions, anything, Lindsay?
No.
Ross?
No.
Penny?
No.
I don't have any either.
Yes. Yes, yes. Our, our acting chief is going to come up and share with us some things that we're trying to do with our young people here in, in Richcrest to... trying to do with our young people here in, in, uh, Richcrest to hope alleviate some of the, uh, extra activities that have been going on here in Richcrest that we can get a better control on it.
Yeah, have any extra activities going on?
Uh, council and myself have been discussing creating something for the youth, um, here in Richcrest that maybe we can help with, that doesn't cost money or, you know, if so, very little money and maybe we can get some help with that. Um, so we are looking for input from anyone, teens, young adults, uh, to what they think would work. We have some ideas that we're running by right now. Something that the, that the young youth, young adults could go to that obviously would be supervised, that could go into the evening past the ten o'clock curfew, Mr. Neal, and get them out doing something together, but with us and others there to make sure that one, they have a good time and two, they are able to get home safely. So we are looking for input, we are seeking some comments from some of the classes at Burrows. And we're going to hit the YAC next week and get the leadership also involved in trying to, uh, come up with some plans to get some activities for the, uh, youth to do instead of sitting at home.
Just to throw out, because I think I had told you, I had a friend that's a teacher at Mesquite and I asked her this question and she said something to look into that she's heard a lot about is intramural sports, but for the older age kids, because they play baseball, football, all the way through, and then in high school, if they don't make the team, they're done and they don't have any other options. And she said she's seen a lot of the kids that were really into sports and then didn't have that to turn to and started turning to the wrong crowds. And so that was, um, her recommendation was something that we could look into.
Well, I know that IWV Baseball has their cult division, which are for the older kids, and they never get any signups. So maybe we just need to help them blast it out there. Um, we haven't had one for, that I can remember for the past several years, just because there were no participants. Um, so yeah, maybe that's an option.
You know, and that's, that's a good point though, Lindsay. I know when I was in high school, many, many, millions of years ago, I was too short for basketball, too light for football, didn't like baseball, and, um, so, and I wasn't smart enough to go out for track, because after I got out of high school, I really enjoyed running. But anyway, uh, that was one thing that really impressed me with Burrows High School, when my daughter decided as a freshman to go to tennis. Tennis doesn't cut anybody. You're, you're good enough to be on varsity, you're on varsity, and everybody else is on JVs. They don't all get to go out of town to play, but they all get rotated in town. And everybody gets to, everybody makes the team that goes out, which I thought was kind of neat. And, um, so it's too bad that all the sports couldn't be that way, but I guess, I guess some of the sports have caps on how many players they can have on a team, so. But, um, I don't know how you do an intramural. We already have, like you say, baseball, we all have football too, don't we? Isn't there, is there a Valley Big Football and?
Well, just up to when they go to high school.
Oh, just until they go to high school.
No, they have a, a-
Oh, that's right, they do have an adult league now.
Have adult league, yeah.
That's right.
Adult league.
Isn't the adult league only if you're eighteen and over?
Probably.
Yes, yes, it is, eighteen and-
So you've got a gap there.
So if you're sixteen or seventeen, you're out of luck.
Right.
Sure.
And I know, like, um, Emmanuel used to allow the kids from ops to play on their football and allow them to play on their sports teams, but some of the sports, like, they don't have a football team right now, so, so that was just something I wanted to throw out.
It's good, we're looking for, we're looking for different ways to reach those, those kids, some kind of way instead of doing the other stuff. Some people don't play sports, they do dance, they do music. Most of them play with their phones now, you know? We've got to figure out something to, to do and, and acting chief is doing a good job at. So maybe we can reach out also to Mesquite to see if we can get those kids.
Well, and your youth advisory committee, uh-
Right. That's who we're gonna include next week.
Okay, listen.
Yes, you're correct.
And we did go meet with the Boys and Girls Club in Bakersfield. Were you gonna?
You want to share that? Not yet, it's too early?
Yeah, I don't know. We, Councilman Thomas and I went, um, a couple of weeks ago to Bakersfield to meet with the Boys and Girls Club of Kern County to start up discussions with them on if they were interested in returning to Richcrest, so we're seeing what happens there.
What happens there, okay.
Because we've got an awesome building.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, city manager report.
Yes, I want to have, uh, Mr. Patton come up and, uh, talk a little bit on the, the parks, as well as the splash pad, where we're currently at on those items.
All right. So let's start with Upjohn Park, since that's the current project that's underway. So this, last week, we began to extract all of the old equipment out of the park, um, which we completed, um, which we're gonna repurpose in another park for, to use as barriers. But anyway, today, I think I sent you a picture of the, um, the, uh, they're removing all of the old dirt and getting, getting the ground prepared for the new equipment, which will arrive, originally I thought it was gonna be there, but it's gonna arrive, arrive on the eleventh, then it'll take them a couple of days to put it in. Um, and then that, that project will be complete. Uh, right after that, the, uh, we'll start, uh, extracting the equipment from Upjohn Park and that will be done, or Pearson Park, I'm sorry. And that will be, uh, the, the equipment for that park won't arrive here till around the twenty-first. They're not sure it's gonna ship on the, on the fourteenth of the month and it'll arrive about a week later, so, they're, they're saying about a week. So hopefully around the twenty-first, that'll, that'll arrive and will be done. Again, it'll take a couple of days to install that equipment and, and will be completed there. Uh, currently on the splash pad, they are in the design phase, um, which is a six-week process. We've got about another week and a half or so left for that, um, if, if things are going well, which, which, uh, I'm in almost daily contact with them and it, and it sounds like everything's going as planned. Um, after that, it'll go to plan check with the county. Um, that's about another five to six week process. They're, they're, they're allowing for that. Uh, hopefully we can, uh, expedite that a little bit and then, uh, um, depending on how long that, that la, that process lasts, we'll go into construction mode on that shortly after. Um, what other project we got going? Oh, we have, uh, um, the Kerrigan U Sports Complex. As, as you all probably remember, we went out to bid on that several months back. Um, the bids all came in higher, we think we've made the proper adjustments, and that project will actually go out to bid again on the fifteenth of this month, uh, hoping to award a contract on the first, uh, award the bid to, to a, uh, contractor on the, uh, first council meeting in October, to get that, uh, project going. So that's, that's the hopes for that and being completed sometime in January with that project. Uh, so as you can see, some really cool things are happening and, uh, from my side of the fence and my department, I want to thank all of you for, um, helping me and supporting me in these projects, um, that have been going on for a long, long time. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Strand for, uh, his support and providing the resources for me to move forward on all these projects, because, uh, with the exception of the splash pad, all of these other projects have been in, in progress for, for nine years. Uh, and I've been, in one form or another, I've been in, involved every step of the way, once as a planning commissioner, once as a city council member, and now four years on the staff side, and all of these projects are finally moving. So that's, that's saying something about you guys, all of you guys sitting up there and even helped with RICA with contracts and things like that. So I, I really appreciate all your help and even, even Mr. Lemieux's office, uh, me and, me and Colin have been come, become really good friends working through all these contracts and getting these agreements taken care of. So it's, it's been a process, but I'm, I'm really proud that they're all moving forward and I, I sincerely thank you all.
Thank you. Anything else, Ron?
Uh, yes, just one little notification, um, we are going to be, uh, increasing or putting a small fee on some of our recreation, uh, programs to assist in paying for our live scan of the coaches. Um, we hadn't budgeted, um, the amount that we normally spend every year to live scan the coaches, to do a background check. Uh, we've been doing that now for about eight, nine years now. It's been really successful in reducing the number of incidents we've had with, with coaches and programs and stuff. So it's just a small, I think a dollar fifty fee that will cover for all the live scans, uh, that we need to do for the coaches, for the programs. So.
Thank you. Next item is future agenda items. Anybody have any? Next item is mayor and council comments. Lindsay?
Sure. I just, as I mentioned before, um, the splash pad, we made sure it's not being plopped out in the middle of Freedom Park where the flag display is. It's along the side, along the bushes, so there'll still be plenty of room for the flags. Um, the other thing is, you know, I appreciate the concern in that we would likely be shutting the splash pad off during, especially the services that occur, so that there's not kids out there screaming while people are, um, doing their remembrance. Um, locating it across the street, uh, would require us to then staff that facility separately and open up another building. Um, so that is why we chose the location that we chose. Um, I wanted to say thank you very much for, uh, the staff that has been working to pu, paint the bus shelters out in front of City Hall. They look awesome. They were getting rusted and now they are looking fabulous for the upcoming weekend festivities. And we also, I don't know if I've told you guys, we got a bus shelter installed at High Desert Haven, too. Um, and that was really exciting, because we actually had the bus shelters sitting out in the lot, so we didn't have to purchase a new shelter, we just had to go out and, so I really appreciate everyone who worked on that and made that effort happen, so.
Okay. Wallace, any comments?
Don't laugh, I'm, I'm fifty-seven, I don't, I, I had something I was gonna say. Outside of that, I'll just say I, I'm really happy with the council that we have. Good team, we come together and we're getting some things done and I'm, um, happy to see the progress that we're, and where we're going.
Well, Eddie and I always have a bet on what time this meeting is gonna go. He, he said eight forty-five, I said nine thirty. It's nine thirty right now, meeting adjourned.